Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of February 20th, 2018. We have one item on our study session agenda this evening, and it is the Police Growth Strategic Plan. And I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Jeff Tein, to kick it off.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. And as you had mentioned, Mayor, this is the study session to discuss the Police Growth Strategic Plan. This is an important study session for us because as an organization, of course, we've been focused first and foremost on public safety for our residents and the perception of public safety for our residents. The reality is that police operations is a very complex, broad conversation, and it's ever-changing, and it's very different from community to community. And so as a result of that, we always want to continually look at the way that we serve our residents in our public safety areas. The good news, of course, just a reminder, the city council has been focused and emphasized their support on law enforcement for a number of years. In the last five years, the city council has approved 14 new positions. Council's also provided funding for full deployment of body-worn cameras, full deployment of the new all-in-one tablets, funding for the telephone reporting unit. All of those I give as examples, which really are there to help assist our patrol officers in dealing with other specific issues and instances. Nonetheless, it is important that as a high-functioning department, we continually look at ways that we can improve, and that means tapping into the best practices of law enforcement agencies across the country. In the last year's budget process, the council had offered funding to fire, not fire, to hire a police management consultant group, and they would independently evaluate the department and look at a number of different areas, including patrol operations, investigations, communications, a number of other areas, community outreach. The intent was not just to look at how to optimize the department, but also to prepare the department for the growth challenges and trends that we expect as a community here in Peoria. So within the scope again was to look at existing operations and make sure that we were optimized, but also have a plan for going forward, what we call a growth strategic plan. So as you see, the consultant, as you'll find, has done a very thorough job of looking at our department, both from a magnifying lens and also from a bird's-eye view. But the city council has mentioned to me their eagerness in viewing these findings, so we want to make sure you had enough time to digest what you hear tonight and make sure that we can be prepared with recommendations before the budget process. Real quickly, we'll discuss in a second the discussion for the consultant selection and what that process went through, as well as their review process. And following that, we'll focus most of the attention, will allow for the consultant to speak through their presentation. Of course, no one knows their operation better than Chief Minter and his command staff, so they are here in the audience, including Chief Minter here in the waiting area, to address and clarify any questions as they were to come up. And again, as in prior study sessions, we really want this to be interactive. And so the consultant has mentioned that he would be open and appreciate the open dialogue through the presentation, so no need to wait. If you have an item that it does, you find germane or impactful, good to bring that up during the presentation. Of course, this requires even more than a couple of hours to digest a big, complex topic like this. However, I'll keep a close eye on the clock to make sure that we do have enough time before the council meeting, the regular council meeting begins. So at this point, I would like to introduce Tammy Shreev. She served as the project manager for this important study and did a wonderful job in helping to coordinate the entire review process, working with the consultant, and can discuss a little bit of the process for us.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce Richard Brady, President of the Matrix Consulting Group, and Ian Brady, Manager with the Matrix Consulting Group. As Mr. Tein mentioned, I am the Project Manager for the Police Department Strategic Growth Plan. I worked with the Police Department Executive Staff and Labor Union Leaders to develop the scope of work for this plan. The scope of work identifies three specific areas. First, a 10-year projection to determine personnel resources that are needed within the next decade. Second, to conduct a deployment analysis that maximizes the efficiency and effectiveness of our patrol function, as well as support and investigation activities. And third, a review of the management structure and responsibilities. We also included in the scope of work that the recommendations for the plan be based on objective analytical data. A competitive request for proposal was developed and released. We received eight proposals from potential consultants. The city's selection team consisted of six members representing sworn and non-sworn representatives from the Police Department's leadership, the Peoria Police Officers Association, the Peoria Police Supervisors Association, the Finance Department, and the Public Works Utilities Department. As a project manager, I was not on the selection team. Matrix Consulting Group was selected in August of 2017 to conduct the study at a cost of $68,000. It was important to management that consultants, that the consultant was able to independently work from the city on the study. The consultant was provided the requested data and information, as well as met alone to interview sworn and non-sworn police personnel. I have been the point person for the consultants. Again, we wanted the study to be objective with recommendations based on analytical data. The Matrix team checked in during the study to confirm factual accuracies for items such as personnel authorization count, division unit names, and activities. The strategic plan is now complete, and we've asked the Matrix Consulting Group representatives to present their findings to you today. So with that, I will now pass it over to Richard Brady.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I am the Richard Brady part of this team. I'm the President of the company, and I was the project manager on this assignment. And Ian Brady was our lead analyst, especially with respect to field operations, to patrol. But we had three other people assigned to the project as well who aren't here tonight, who worked on investigations in other parts of the organization. So what we wanted to do is spend some time walking you through the report that we've just completed, and as both the city manager and Tammy have mentioned, make this interactive. So please feel free to interrupt us or ask questions that may clarify what we're talking about in terms of the data and in terms of the work that we've done with the Police Department here. I thought I would, before we got started with the study, since you weren't part of the evaluation process that Tammy just mentioned, just to tell you a little bit about who we are and provide some credibility, I think, as far as who our firm is and the project team that work with you and your Police Department. We've been around for decades in one way, shape, or form. A group of senior people started this firm over 15 years ago, but those same senior people worked together in this and other firms going back to the 1980s. So we do a lot of things for local government, but law enforcement is our largest service area. We've worked with over 300 law enforcement agencies, just as Matrix Consulting Group. In Arizona, we've worked with Phoenix, we've worked with Goodyear and a couple of others. But we've worked with many police departments in 41 states around the country recently for places like Wichita, Kansas, San Jose, California, Miami Beach, Florida, Yarmouth, Massachusetts, so pretty much the four corners and everything in between. I think it's important to stress our philosophy in conducting these studies, and we think it's an old-fashioned way of consulting that still works. It's fact-based. We recognize that all of our clients' situations that bring them to have a study that we're involved with them on is because of some unique history, something, many other things that are unique about the agency in terms of its composition, its growth patterns, its law enforcement needs, et cetera. And so we need to understand that in a fact-based approach where we are collecting a lot of data associated with field response and investigative cases, et cetera, but also talking to a lot of people within the department because you're not going to get a good idea about law enforcement services until you talk to the people. And so we had an ambitious process within the department to make sure that we understood work management and work approaches and things like that. So we spent a lot of time onsite working with your Police Department, and at each step in this process, that was about four months long, we met with members of the Police Department and with others in the city to review our progress from facts to identification of issues to preliminary analysis of alternatives leading to this report that we put together for you. So that is a little bit about us. So let's talk about what you asked us to do. The city manager said it best. It's been 10 years since you had a law enforcement study. Carol Buracker and Associates did the last one, a very famous law enforcement consulting firm from back then, and they did a very fine job, but a lot has changed since then. In between then and now, we've had the most serious recession since the Great Recession, which impacted growth, it impacted development within the city, it impacted the service needs of the city. And now that the city is growing and poised for more growth, it's a good time to step back and say, how has the city changed? How has its law enforcement needs changed? And how good a job has the department done at keeping up with that? Not just in terms of number of people, but how they're deployed, how they're managed, how they're used. In patrol, how they're using their proactive time in investigations, how they're making sure that important cases, highly prioritized cases are moving forward, et cetera. So that's really what we spent the first half of the study doing, is just understanding the workload and service needs of the city and how the department was deployed and utilizing staff to meet the needs. That led us to an analysis of what appropriate staffing needs are today and for a 10-year planning period, and we'll talk about that as we go through this. Since it's not just a question of looking at workload at a certain level of service, but how resources are managed is just as important as all of these. So we carefully looked at how field operations are managed, how staff are deployed, philosophies about how you back up on certain types of crimes and other types of incidents, how you manage proactive enforcement types of things, like traffic enforcement and things like that, and in investigations, understand how you prioritize cases, especially property crime and other kinds of things, that without leads and suspects, you have to make decisions about the best use of personnel so that we are working with highly prioritized cases, especially person crimes, but also property crimes that have some important impact on the community that we needed to understand. So the management of operations was just important for us to ensure that you had an efficient and effective foundation upon which to build now and in the next 10 years. Since this study was never intended to be just a snapshot, I mean, it was a projection as well as looking at what your needs are now, this needed to be a living process. So whatever we've done to get to this point in the study, we're leaving behind with you. So our projection methodologies, the way we analyze patrol staffing needs, and same thing with other parts of the organization, these analytical tools, benchmarks, best practices, et cetera, will be left with you, including the model, because things will change. I mean, we will have, we will have projected workload and calls for service and cases and crime and things like that for 10 years, but I assure you, starting probably next year, it will be different. So we are making projections based on the best data, the existing data that is right now, but things will change. So it's important not to just use this as a way that, to say that Matrix Consulting Group said that by some point in the future, we would have this many staff. So the tools are very important, the analytical tools are very important. So I mentioned some of the analytical methods that we did, and I'll just quickly go through them again. Extensive input from law enforcement personnel, I don't have the exact number, but it's somewhere between 75 and 100 people within the Police Department that we had some form of contact with, including ride-alongs, some people in some units, we interviewed everybody. And again, while we spent a lot of time getting budget information, information from computer systems, the way work is managed, the way different units work together, things that don't make any kind of annual report or other kind of work measurement system, you can only get by talking to people about their work, issues associated with their work, issues associated with working with other staff within the Police Department. So that was very important for us. But the data was important, too. And so as you look at the report when you get it, you'll see that there are probably as many numbers in it as there are words, and so that's an important part of the foundation of who we are and leaving you with a fact-based analysis of what your staffing and management needs are. Because this was forward-looking, we needed to work with your planning staff to understand where the city was going, and our method for doing that is not just to look by year at projected numbers of developments and the population that will be in developments, but to look at where those are, the type of development, et cetera, because the type of growth that you have and where it occurs is really important for analyzing what future needs will be and the deployment of those staff in the future. So we did that at a very fine level that we'll talk about in a minute. So detailed analysis of current projected staffing, together with timetables associated with when organizational growth and staffing growth would occur, et cetera. Throughout this process, as I mentioned, we met with the Police Department extensively to review our findings, as well as the analysis that we conducted. So there's, as I mentioned at the beginning, and the city manager did too, there's been a lot of change in this city, and there hasn't been a good, comprehensive look at the Police Department in over 10 years. The city's population has tripled. You were actually a client of ours, one of our first clients when we started the firm, and I think 2003 it was. We did a study, it was a development fee study, so we're aware of the growth that's happened in the past 15 years. But it's accelerating now because there was a hiatus of a few years where there wasn't a lot of growth at all. So this is really important. So the Great Recession occurred between those times, and that has fundamentally affected you and all of our clients. It means that there were several years where you were just trying to take care of the basics, take care of the highest priority things, and, but it's had a lot of impacts on the department. As you grew after the recession was over, and even in some parts of the city while the recession was still on, maybe there was a mismatch of staff to workload in certain functions in certain parts of the city. Maybe you had the wrong kind of staff in one area as another, looking at sworn and non-sworn kinds of functions. The recession impacted civilian functions within your department and every police department around the country because it was important to have sworn law enforcement personnel, gave you flexibility to deal with a lot of problems, but they don't need to do everything either. And so that was an important part of our analysis. But as I mentioned, work methods have changed, best practices have changed in law enforcement, and so this was a way of checking in against those and see how you compare to those kinds of benchmarks. So our major findings here. Proactive capabilities, which is an important part of how we evaluate patrol, and that's going to be a lot of what we're going to be talking about here this evening, overall their capabilities are high, but you know how you get to averages? You can average things that are really high with very low, and it comes up in the middle, it looks fine. The more you look at it, the more the problems existed within Peoria. While there's extensive amount of proactive time for officers assigned to the northern areas of the city because there isn't a lot of development and staff need to be deployed to provide a certain level of service when a call does occur, the exact opposite is in the southern part of the city, where they've got very little, sometimes no, time to be in a problem-solving mode or to be involved in proactive types of activities, which are, is the centerpiece, as we'll describe in a little bit, the centerpiece of what makes a department effective, is solving problems in a proactive way rather than just responding to calls for service. However, if it were just a question of using today's baseline, we would probably be recommending adding staff. But in fact, while there are some net additions, there are issues associated with how you're deploying people by time of day and by area of the city, minimum staffing levels, and decisions about how you use civilian personnel in the field to handle lower priority calls for service that impact all of that. And that by looking at alternatives to scheduling and deployment throughout the city, use of civilians to handle lower priority calls for service, that you could make a significant difference to their ability to be proactive, especially in the South, by doing that. And we'll talk about that in some depth. At the same time, and this is one of those, in part lingering effects of the national recession, the Great Recession, is that vacancy rates, while we were doing our study, were extraordinarily high. About 16% of the positions that you had authorized during the time that we did our field work were vacant. And that's meant that you have anywhere close to normal attrition rate to field the number of people that you needed to provide effective service in patrol, but it also affected investigations and other areas. They're making efforts and great strides to reduce that number of vacancies, so that is a short-term blip, hopefully. But this is a problem nationally. The ability to recruit and people to be police officers in this environment of high scrutiny, and when we are largely at full employment around the country, and there's lots of other things that people can do for employment, has been very difficult. We have clients who have hundreds of positions vacant, much bigger than you, obviously. So this is, this is a swimming upstream thing, and we've made some recommendations about recruitment and training that we'll talk about to address that. But a lot of what this comes down to...
Richard, just a quick item, I apologize for interrupting. So this is really a major summary. We will go through these more in detail as we go forward, just to make sure. I imagine the council's going to wonder when to chime in on some of these pretty high-profile comments.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. So, so again, our analysis led us into directions to look at mitigation for some of these issues. And so we looked at alternative schedules, different ways of deploying and beats, expanding the number and the use of civilians in the field, and work management practices associated with all of that that can make a significant difference in terms of service to the community. But patrol isn't everything in the department, so we'll just start out there. So I'm going to turn it over to Ian, and he's going to talk about patrol.
Excuse me, before you move forward, Vice Mayor Finn?
I just have a quick question on that 16%. You referenced that that's an abnormally high number, I think was, was the term. So to put that in context for us, what is a normal number? What would that, what would that number be generally?
Well, if you look at, most police officers have, if they have a full career in law enforcement, 20 years, something like that, that means you would expect all things being equal and even, that would be something like 5% a year. Most police departments, it's considered to be a normal attrition rate if it's somewhere between 5 and 10%. So it's roughly twice.
Okay. If I may mention, so at the time of the study, we identified a 16%, this was also a time when we notified council that we were having an abnormally high period. Later on, when we get to that point, I think it's important for us to note about the measures that were undertaken and what I would consider the success in lowering that rate down. And we can also talk a little bit about what has been the average vacancy attrition rate that we've had over the last few years, I believe that's a number that we have too. So we'll, we'll go more into that.
Okay, and then just another quick follow-up question to that. That's overall in the entire department, not just patrol officers, or that's the entire department, 16%. Is that correct?
No, that was sworn officers.
Sworn officers.
In Communications, it's higher than that, 27%.
Okay, thanks.
So the basis of the patrol analysis was first getting a year's worth of computer rated dispatch data that enables to tell us how many calls occurred, how much time it took for officers to respond to that, was backup-like, et cetera, so that from that, we could build up a picture of what the actual workload is for patrol officers, who are, aside from proactivity, which I'll describe more, are driven by reactive workloads, people calling, requesting service. And we looked at that on a detailed level by hour, day of week, as well as area. But this chart is really illustrative about that in looking at how workload varies throughout the day. And here we can see that in the early morning, late night hours, very few calls are occurring relatively, but then, but at about 8:00 AM, it starts to pick up. And except for Saturday night, which has workload continuing on into the late night, you see it start to taper off around 8 o'clock, 9:00 PM. So about 7:00 to 8:00, or 8 to 8, is pretty much your period where workload is much higher, that you would need more officers to be able to handle those calls for service and be able to remain proactive.
Excuse me, Councilmember Hunt?
Ian, excuse me, but is there a legend or something that goes with this to explain what the colors indicate? I can't see it here. I requested a hard copy but didn't get it.
Yeah, so the colors are strictly, if it's green, it is going to be fewer calls for service occurring on that hour. If it's red, then it's a lot of calls for service occurring in that hour.
Like three or four to one, green or red?
Right. Yeah, so...
I'm trying to say again.
Three or four, a factor of three or four to one from green to red.
And what's the yellow then?
Somewhere in between, right, but still towards the higher end. So here you can see the, the greatest hour, the one that's most red is 461 calls occurred just on that day of the week in that hour, and then a green one would be like 80. So significant variation in, in workloads between those two. So if you look at some of the most common types of calls, here, blue, it doesn't have a definitive scale per se, but where you see the darker shade of blue, that type of call is more likely to occur then. And we can see here that there's a pretty strong delineation of when calls occurring, when calls are occurring. Accidents typically going to be from 7:30, 7 to 7:00, when people are commuting most prevalent. But we see that the most common types of calls are relatively lower priority, rather than, say, Part 1 crimes or things like that, suspicious circumstances, welfare checks, alarms.
And this is citywide?
Citywide, and so another point to note is that this is only community-generated calls for service, so things like traffic stops or anything like that, area checks that patrol officers are initiating themselves is not included. It's strictly what the community is generating from 911 calls from telephone reports. But in total, 44,000 about was the number for 2016. So in our findings, in looking at what is the total picture of reactive workloads, and how does that relate to staffing? Were we able to determine a statistic that we call proactivity, which is the percentage of time that an officer has, aside from handling those reactive workloads, to be able to be proactive and be able to get out in the field, engage with the community, make traffic stops or other types of crime-producing activities? And that really forms kind of the central benchmark of determining patrol staffing because it gives us a confidence in determining, do they have the capacity to handle workload, first of all, and, but beyond that, do they have the time to be effective and address problems proactively, be able to engage? That overall, most agencies, besides Peoria, should target, generally, it varies, but somewhere around 40 to 45% on an overall basis. And what we found was that in comparing the reactive workloads against the staffing, that Peoria is at 48% overall proactivity. And that's not to say that there are severe deficiencies in certain times, as we'll go into further, but that if you're just looking at it on an overall level, that patrol does have the resources to be proactive.
Ian, so if I could jump in? So if you look at the chart, the green areas show, show where they have over 48% proactivity time or 41% proactivity time. And where is not green, the white, shows where there's a low time, low time for proactivity.
Great. So I'm going to do without the microphone. So my question was, you'd, you'd mentioned 40 to 45% of the general target, but I see 35 on the screen.
At least.
At least. As a basic minimum...
So it's a minimum 35, but a target is more like a 40, 45.
Yeah, generally 40's been a effective target for most agencies.
I swear I won't touch my microphone.
That's right.
Councilmember Hunt?
Okay, I get what the green and white are, but I don't know how you count proactive, would that be neighborhood policing? Community policing?
Yeah.
How much can we do between 2:00 and 6:00 AM?
Very good point.
Or 6:00 and maybe even 10:00 AM? So why do we count that? It's not usable time.
Correct. Right, so during those hours, you're really staffing around response times, your response capabilities, that if there is a major incident, even two major incidents occurring at one time, do you have the capabilities to be able to do that?
And officer safety.
We're not at 48% on this then. This is a skewed chart.
And, and what this chart also shows is that, as you can see by the white boxes during the daytime, which are the times, as you're saying, that are the hours that police officers can actually be proactive and engage with the community, that you currently are very deficient in resources during those times. And to that point, there, so we'll examine, there's even more severe differences when we look at it on a north-south, more detailed level.
Okay, well, yeah, if you explain that, that's pretty obvious, but I just think that 48% is very misleading. We're based on...
You're right, that, that's a common indicator to do it on a 24/7 basis, but that's why we break it down by time block and by day of week, because you're right, during the activity hours of the day, 10 to 10, when people are awake and causing problems or needing help, they, there are issues most days of the week.
Well, neighborhood policing is getting out there when there's no call for service, when you're just saying hi to people and making friends with little kids, and that's just not going to happen on a lot of this time. just not going to happen on a lot of this time.
That's right.
10:00 PM to 2:00 AM is just as bad there at the bottom.
That's right.
I'd like to see, maybe you do show it somewhere. I'd like to see the percentage without the top two rows and the 10 to 2:00 AM row. I'd like to see that recalculated and see what actual percentage of time our officers have to do community policing, which we very much support. We've asked them to do that when they can, but...
No, you're right. And the report actually does go into that.
Okay, good.
So really, basically during the high activity parts of the day, proactivity is more in the lower 30s.
Right, right.
Right, that's what this chart is showing. So we'd like to show the difference from the north and the south.
Right.
Right, right.
Well, I can hardly wait for that one.
There you go.
So what we can see here is that in the north, which, again, you're more staffing about around response times, you have sufficient resources at all times of the day to be proactive, that overall, 54, 55% during the daytime hours. But compare that to the southern area of the city, and you have some really, I would say, very severe issues with the proactivity going into the negatives. And what that's saying is that research, is that the community generated workloads are far above what patrol can actually even handle. So beyond even just proactive time, they don't even have the resources to handle it and just respond to and handle those calls. So you get calls pending, you can have as many as five, 10 calls pending, obviously based on priority. But that shows that there are severe issues that need to be addressed, that currently that this is a very insufficient level of resources during those time periods. And so the question then becomes, what's the best way to address these issues? How do we ensure that proactivity is sufficient in both the north and the south? And what we found is that, first of all, examining the current situation of vacancies in patrol, the current rate of turnover, those people leaving is much less than the number of vacancies that currently exist. So that you've had this buildup of turnover over the years, but you haven't been able to fill the positions. And the result of that is this abnormally large number of vacancies. So first of all, that is something that needs to be addressed. If vacancies were at a normal level, we would be looking at improvements to those charts, that there would be more proactivity in the daytime. But that wouldn't even completely address the problem, that there are also more kind of underlying, even root kinds of causes in the structure of how officers are deployed, how officers are scheduled, that must also be addressed. So in examining solutions to this, we examined a number of different strategies to be able to address it. First of all, looking at the shift schedule, what are the optimal times to be able to deploy officers, the number of officers by time, to be able to have more resources when there's higher workloads, such as the daytime, while also providing for minimum staffing, officer safety during the other times as well. What the balance of officers should be in north and south, so that both, north and south, have proactivity, so that they both have response capabilities, are able to meet response time goals. We looked at opportunities to continue what you've already been doing, and that's diverting certain low priority calls that don't necessarily require a sworn officer to respond to, to be able to have a civilian do it, a police service officer, who's trained to be able to do that, things like very minor non-injury accidents, other types of cold reports, things that you don't need an armed sworn officer responding to. And we looked at what's the maximum capability for that to happen, and identified up to about 3,000 calls from 8:00 to 5:00, I believe, Monday through Friday, that you could have an alternative response that currently sworn officers are responding to. And then again, addressing the issue with vacancies.
I'm sorry, did you say 3,000 calls?
Calls for service, correct. Low priority, things that a police service officer could be able to respond to.
And do now.
And that's over what period of time?
I believe it was 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday.
A year, a week?
Over an entire year.
Yes.
Annually.
Right, yeah.
The next week, just the next week.
It's a very busy week.
Ian, I might, if I may. I'm not sure when the right time is, but I think we brought up a couple times about the vacancy level and the factor of it. If I may, I think this is a good time for the chief to talk a little bit about this. It's been, it's been a recurring issue both here that we've discussed and as we have talked about, is certainly something we're seeing in our neighboring jurisdictions and nationally. Chief does have an update on that, I think is important to bring up, if I may.
That'd be good.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, we lately have been on a very aggressive recruitment and hiring strategy to fill several vacancies in the department, both sworn and non-sworn vacancies. So I just want to give you a quick update on where we are right now with vacancies on the sworn and the non-sworn side. Let me start real quick with some really good news. We had three brand-new employees who started today, one new code enforcement officer, so we are completely full as far as staffing and code enforcement. We filled our crime analyst position, so we now have the crime analyst position filled for the north precinct, and we also filled a records clerk position, so we now are completely full, fully staffed in the records clerk area. We also have eight recruit officers who are currently in the academy. They're in academy right now in Mesa, they're scheduled to graduate in June. We also have two officers who are scheduled to complete their training program out on the street. They complete that training program, one's will be completing in about two weeks, and the other one will be completing in about three weeks. As far as current vacancies for sworn positions, we currently have five sworn vacant positions. Now, we recently interviewed several lateral entry candidates. We have four lateral entry candidates currently in background investigation right now, and then we have a pool of six additional lateral candidates right now that we'll be looking at interviewing. One of the other areas that's been kind of a critical concern lately is our communications area, and we had several openings, somewhere between as many as 10 or 11 openings in our communication center. I'm pleased to announce right now, the current openings we have in communications right now, we have a communications supervisor position, which we put on hold right now. But right now, we currently only have two vacant positions in our communications section. We have one person currently in background investigations at this time. We anticipate that hiring may occur sometime within the next three weeks. Also, we recently gave a test for our dispatchers. We had 22 people actually tested, 20 of those people passed the written exam, and we have 12 of those individuals who have moved on to the first round of interviews. So right now, we basically have 12 people who are interviewing for that one position in communications. The other one that we looked at was our PSOs, and you've heard just a few minutes ago about how valuable our PSOs are to the organization. Right now, we have one opening for PSO. We did that as an internal posting right now. I don't have a number of applicants right now, I believe that closed last Thursday. So we're looking to see how many applicants we have, but we're pleased right now that we only have one opening for PSO, and we're going to be looking to fill that one as soon as possible.
Wow, that's a lot. So if I can just make sure that I understand this, you have five sworn positions that are vacant?
Correct.
Is that correct? And you currently are interviewing for those? How many interviews do you have?
We have already conducted interviews, and we have four lateral entry candidates who are in the background investigation process, two in-state lateral candidates, two out-of-state lateral candidates. And then we have an additional pool of six lateral candidates who we have applications for that we have not put in the interview process yet.
So although we've had a lot of vacancies up to this point, all of a sudden, well, maybe not all of a sudden, I know you've been working on it for a long time, but what is changing? What turned the tide so that now we can practically be staffed up?
Well, like I said, we've been very aggressive in the area of recruitment and hiring. And Carol Johnson is our lead recruiter, and Carol has done an outstanding job of getting out there and kind of beating the bushes and generating a lot of really great interest in the department. And we've also done a really good job of, you know, doing, speeding up kind of the background investigation process and getting the name of the organization out there. So I guess I got to give most of the credit to Carol Johnson and the outstanding job she has done and continues to do in the area of recruitment and hiring.
Okay, well, that's great. Congratulations. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Sorry, just one clarification on that. Are the five after the eight finish up the academy, is it above and beyond that, or are those five going to be filled with the eight that would be coming out of the academy plus three?
No, the eight is included in the vacancies that we currently have. Those have been filled already with the eight that we have in the academy. Over and above those eight that we have in the academy, we had five additional openings.
Vacant, okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patina?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, can you tell me approximately, in terms of percentages, of how many of your candidates do not make it through the background check?
That, I'd have to get some assistance, and I don't know if we have a percentage, and I don't know if Carol's still here. Percentage of people who don't make it through background.
Oh, Carol's... Chief?
It's hit or miss, Rowley. What would you think? Maybe 45% don't make it.
Wow.
That's great. Thank you.
45%. Wow.
And that's after you lose many people from the application, from initial interviews, from other kinds of tests that they take, written, physical agility, things like that. So...
So the ones I'm looking at here are cream of the crop, huh?
They are.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
And the consulting wet blanket on this would be, it's a never-ending process because a department this size is going to lose, on average, 10 people a year, 10 sworn personnel a year.
Well, we have Carol.
Yes, exactly.
All right. Thank you.
So we looked at a number of strategies to improve capabilities, because as the slide before that showed, which broke it down by north and south, if you're a patrol officer in the south, the reality is that you have severely under the number of people deployed during the daytime hours that you need to be effective, just to handle calls, let alone be proactive. So we looked at a number of strategies. The first of these was looking at shift schedules. And what we found was that there wasn't very much variation in terms of the number of people that are deployed by shift, so the resources aren't being flexed to when the workload was occurring. We looked at the start time of the day shift, which is fairly unusual start time, but it occurs at 5:00, or it starts at 5:30. And it's too early to capture most of the hours where workload is much higher. Think back to that slide, a few slides ago, which showed the calls for service by hour and day. 8:00, 9:00 is really when the calls start ramping up and increasing. And so at 5:30, you have a few hours in the beginning where there's not much workload to handle. So if you're going to deploy more officers during that day shift to capture those higher workload hours, that you have opportunities to shift that later. With the swing shift, less issues with that, but nonetheless, that it was starting slightly, that it's starting slightly too late to be able to capture more of those hours in the early morning when calls are much greater, because by the time they get to the end of the shift, calls have already started tapering off for a few hours. But also that there's an imbalance between the resources that are deployed north and south, which helped exacerbate that issue of not having the resources in south in particular. So we looked at hundreds of different alternative schedules and examined what potential effects of those would be, and came up with a suggested schedule that, first of all, shifted the day shift to 7:00, so still providing a slight overlap, but not very much of one. Swing shift starting slightly earlier, one hour back to 12:30. And then the night shift being unchained at 21:30 to 7:30, so keeping what it is currently. And that by doing that, it has positive effects. It doesn't fix all the issues, certainly. There's still many deficiencies that need to be addressed through other strategies, as we'll get into. But that significant improvements are made. If you look at the chart on the right, which is, it's actually reversed, it should be north on the left and south on the right. But in the PSP South's chart, there are no more hours of the day that are in the single digits or even negatives, that at least it's above 10%, which is still insufficient, but it's better than what it is currently.
Okay, before you move on from this, since that was a little complicated, first things first, would you convert military time for people who don't know what it is?
Right, right. So 7:00 AM, and then just afternoon, 12:30 PM. And then the other one, or the night shift, would begin at 9:30 PM.
Okay, so do you have, is there an overlap in the swing shift to the night shift?
Swing shifts to night shifts, yes. There'd be one hour of overlap. The swing shift would end at 10:30 PM, but the night shift would begin at 9:30 PM.
Okay.
Less of an overlap from night, which would end at 7:30 AM, and day shift would begin at 7:00 AM, so it would just be a half hour overlap.
Okay, and so with this change in shifts, you're going to have this change in the green colors on the chart, but it's minimal for the south?
Right, right. It does not completely or comprehensively address the issues. And so it was important to look at a number of other strategies as well. This is just one piece. It doesn't solve everything, it doesn't solve even many things, but it does, it does make improvements to help address some of these issues.
Okay, one more question. You said that you checked, you checked on hundreds of shifts, and this is, these are the best ones?
Right.
The most overlap you should have at busy times and so forth?
Right. There were some other options, like you could do things like make a fourth shift that could maybe provide more efficiency, but that would create more qualitative issues, such as issues with having more complicated shift schedules, it's harder to meet minimum staffing, or various other considerations.
Supervision.
Right, right, exactly. But these were the ones, and there are other options that can provide somewhat similar results, but along those lines, that's kind of the better configuration to match workload.
Councilmember Hunt?
I'm very confused by not having a hard copy to lay side by side. So I don't, I don't know how much on the south side, on the right, that's my area. So that's why I'm interested. I don't know how much of a difference this makes, but so are you saying minuscule? And are we going to get a hard copy of this?
Yeah.
If I may.
It goes from 36% to 42% overall on a 24/7 basis, just on the scheduling, not the redeployment that we'll be talking about in a couple of minutes.
Right, right.
Just the schedule.
A couple items. So Councilmember Hunt had asked for a copy of this. So again, we tried to get in front of you as fast as we could, as soon as they had the results. We will anticipate having copies for everyone in the next 24 hours. In addition, I think what I'm sensing in the presentation, just if I'm understanding, there's a number of recommendations you're going to have. This is one of them.
Right, right.
And that you happen to be showing graphically that it has this impact. My guess is it'll be cumulative, the next one will get it better, the next will get better. You may want to, just in the interest of time, kind of get...
Right.
It's building, yeah.
Right. So we looked at issues with deployment, we looked at workload by area of the city, looking not just at north-south, but by beat, the smallest level of detail. And what we found is that workload varies significantly, so that any, all those issues that you saw in the south are much greater in certain areas, where in the beats that have much higher workloads, proactivity is even less than what you saw in the overall average. And this is exacerbated by the growth, and anticipated growth that's occurring in Peoria, where any beats that already have more workload than average are going to have significantly more. And so we looked at opportunities to develop an alternative beat structure that, A, can be staffed from a minimum staffing perspective, that you can have an officer in each beat at all times, that you can have future, that it's able to prepare for future growth, and it addresses issues with imbalances in workload, while still providing for response time considerations in areas like the north. Looking at patterns, here we can see that there's no hotspots in the north, so it's really more about response times, but that in the south, it's more concentrated around arterial roads, other types of areas where calls are more likely to occur. So this is the current one, and this is looking at whether in each beat, workload is higher or lower than the overall average. So purple is what you want to strive for, you want everything to be purple, shows that workload is about even with the average. Red, it's slightly more. Blue, it's slightly or greatly less. And so we found that about half the beats or so are around the average, the other half can vary dramatically.
And not just slightly. The red ranges from 20% above the average to over 40%. And the blue is 20% to more than 40% below the average.
Right. And if it's the darker one, then that means it's more than 40. So I think we had one that was much higher than 40%. So beyond just looking at workload, an effective beat structure should keep neighborhoods and neighborhoods together, that you have, you know, a beat cop who is responsible for an area, that is able to have more direct interface with a specific community, rather than having splits, split pieces of different communities, that they're able to get to know individual areas. So keeping those together in a beat structure, keeping in mind... those together in a beat structure. Keeping in mind transportation routes and barriers, things like, uh, what the one-on-one, or other types of geographic barriers that would impede travel across the beat, equalizing workloads, as we mentioned, also being able to adapt for, for future growth. So, we developed a new structure that's able to accomplish that, that equalizes workload, reduces the number of beats, that you can have a consistent presence in each beat at all times, and get back to a beat-based employment rather than larger areas. And that's something that would need to be reviewed, to make sure that it makes sense at the officer level. But we recommend that a new beat structure should be, should be implemented. And that will make significant strides and be able to address the issues with productivity at the officer level in certain locations.
Okay. I think we need a little more clarification on this. Oh, Councilmember Edward, you wanna start?
Yeah. So, looking at beat forty-one, forty-two, in your previous slide, forty-two was a different number. It was sixty-two, sixty-one. So, the changes that you're recommending will take it from a, from a red or pink to a, to a purple, meaning more coverage, more, more time on the street for the officers? What exactly does that mean?
Yeah. It, it means that being, capabilities to be able to have more time on the street to be proactive are more evenly distributed, so that you don't have some beats with, that are the busy beats with way more workload than the average, and you don't have some that have almost no workload, that it's more evenly spread throughout.
So, for, for the example that you mentioned, in the existing beat structure, beat sixty-one is forty, more than forty percent above the average workload, and it's average in the reconfigured one.
Right. Right.
And when you say workload, you mean calls?
Calls.
Right. Calls. Okay.
Vice Mayor.
I am so sorry. I've had a long day, apparently. I'm trying to see the difference between forty-two, the significant difference between forty-two and sixty-one geographically.
It's almost the same. It, it's just a slight...
So, how did I go from red to forty percent or more above to average?
I'm finding it with that area.
It looks like there's just a tiny sliver that's been changed.
Right. And I believe that it must have just been right at the threshold of, right around there, and it must have changed out a call hotspot or something.
Because if you go back to the hotspot map, you can see that there's some hotspots, I think, in the southern part of sixty-one.
Does your data, sorry, does your data pinpoint that, so that when we get the report, we can take a look at it and say, okay, this is...
Yeah. There's, there's a lot of hotspot maps in the report.
And also, the, the, the average is different than they're aiming for, because the, the number of beats has been reduced. So, by having fewer beats, each beat is gonna have a higher workload target. So, the, the number of calls that are actually handling that beat is probably gonna be about the same, but because the average is different.
So, there are, excuse me, more beats now in the new one?
The new one has fewer beats.
Fewer beats. The officers stay within the borders of those beats, and they currently do not do that?
Well, it's more of a, districts, what we observed in interviews, were more kind of main focus. And, and a district would combine multiple beats into one. So, currently, districts are really kind of the main area of responsibility for patrol officers, rather than at the beat level. So, we're recommending that by going to fewer beats, you're able to go back to that approach of focusing on beat-by-beat level.
And so, how practical is it really to expect that an officer can stay within those borders at all times?
Uh, well, well certainly, it wouldn't be...
Come on. The chief can also explain a little bit, if you'd like, about, this has been a discussion that we've had internally about the current way we have had things called identified as beats. We've been looking at doing a consolidation of those for a while, but we could probably better explain that this will allow for officers to stay within a defined geographic area. Is that correct, chief?
That's, that's correct. But I think what we may be missing is, Ian, are you saying that by reducing the number of beats, that will put more officers in those beats?
Right. That, right, that you'd be able to have more officers per beat, and that you're able to evenly distribute capabilities, rather than having some areas that have more or less in the way of productive time.
So, you're gonna discuss the distribution of personnel
Right.
in those beats?
Right. Right.
The, the, the shift schedule has, has an impact on that as well, as does the fact that if we're talking about a city with fewer beats, but if we're talking about, for illustrative purposes, the same number of people, we've got more people available to handle calls. So...
Right.
All of those have an impact.
Councilmember Hunt?
It feels like smoke and mirrors, because if you have the same number of citizens and the same number of police officers, sorry if I'm dense on this, but it seems like you've got the same number of people having a problem and a call for service, and it doesn't really matter if you give them a bigger beat, and it, it doesn't seem like that matters.
It does, because it's like political redistricting. We are looking at ways of dividing the workload, so we maintain high service levels while also distributing that workload, so it's more even for the staff, which is the opposite of gerrymandering.
Right. Plus, you're recommending a shift change, where there'd be more officers at, during those main, at key times, so there'd be more officers available.
Right. Right.
So, it's a combination of several different recommendations.
Okay. Councilmember Leoni?
Yeah. I'd like to ask a question, chief. How many officers do we have in each district?
Well, it depends on the district. We usually try and keep one in the area. So, it could be, depending on what staffing looks like, it could be two, it could be one, it could be three in each area.
Is that daytime or nighttime?
Could be daytime, could be nighttime. It could be a double squad day, when we have double the amount of officers who we usually have on that shift. So, it all depends on the day of the week, and it all depends on how many officers we have assigned on duty that particular day.
And do they have backup if they need it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt? I have a question for the chief. I think I remember several slides back that it said that the, the northern part, I, I think one of them said you wanted to shift some of those officers to the south for equality. Is that right? You wanted to move maybe three or something?
Right. Right.
Okay. Well, I think that would cause some real problems with people in the north to have their police taken away, but that's up to you guys to say. But what I did want to know, chief, is of the eight, I think you said eight new officers have been hired, is that correct?
We have eight in the academy right now.
Okay.
And we have five who, five vacancies, who are moving forward, filling those vacancies.
Okay. Well, does it make sense to place those, then, in the south, since we are deficient in service down here?
Well, what we do is, we look at where the vacancies are, and where the critical need is at that particular point, Councilmember Hunt. We're fortunate in the fact that we have almost all of our patrol positions filled. So, we're looking at what the most critical needs are right now. Those officers, as they come out of training, they may fill a north slot, they may, may fill a soft slot. So, it all depends on what the most critical need...
Why, why would they, just based on what we've seen so far, why would they go to the north, when we have the deficiencies in the south, and they're even recommending taking them from the north?
Councilmember Hunt, maybe we could let them say, let them finish this segment, because there's more, right?
Right. And I think it, it's basically, it's an equation. It's kind of like, it's like a wheel. There's a lot of different spokes. It's gonna make it work better. So, if we could just...
Well, that just seems real logical.
Let's get through some of this, and then we can ask some other questions.
Okay.
Right. So, the alternative beat structure wouldn't solve all the issues, but again, it's a piece of it, that it's better evenly distributing capabilities. And so, looking forward to the future, as growth and development occurs, Rich is gonna go into how we, how we developed our analysis of looking at projections.
Okay. As I indicated earlier, we didn't just straight line, straight line out population projections, and then took this today, or the recommended level, as a base. We looked at it in, at a much finer level, and were able to use the, the data that we had on a block-by-block or neighborhood kind of basis, to look at how workload, in terms of calls for service, was distributed around the city, because it extensively varies quite a bit throughout the city, and use existing areas to model future areas. So that if we had a high-density residential area that's projected to occur sometime in the next ten years, we would look at existing high residential density, and same thing with single-family homes and, and commercial areas, et cetera. So, because unlike many cities, larger cities, Phoenix, for example, where they're developing an entertainment district that you don't really have, in the same kind of magnitude, it means that population will grow faster than projected calls for service. And this is a trend that you see in most places, because you don't have visitor population, you don't have a lot of transient population. That would impact calls for service. So, we looked at that, so that we had a handle on what the call for service growth overall would be, but that also helped to look at how new police officer positions would be distributed throughout the city. So, the modeling that we did to do that showed that in the next ten years, population will grow about twenty-six, twenty-seven percent, somewhere around there. But calls for service will grow about sixteen percent. And major crime, the FBI's definition in the Uniform Crime Report of seven crimes, homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, are what they consider a major crime, that they count the same way everywhere across the United States. And it's a good benchmark. It's not, obviously, all crime. It's a small proportion of all crime, but it's the most serious crime, and it's a foundation upon which, as we'll talk about in a little bit, how to evaluate investigations. And that's why we looked at that here. So, major crime will increase at a lower rate than even calls for service, based on that. So, patrol projections, by 2022, there'll be an additional three officers required to maintain the same level of service, for a total of one hundred and six officers. And that will grow to another seven, because growth is projected to ramp up in that second five-year increment, for a total strength of one hundred and thirteen, including both north and south. For those levels, you will need another sergeant, because the spans of control will grow enough to require another sergeant. And then, we haven't talked about the police service officers. We did conceptually about using operations management and having non-police officers, so paraprofessional level of people that you have right now, police services officers, to handle minor accidents, other traffic kinds of things, cold thefts, lost items, those types of things, quasi-code enforcement types of things, even though you've got code enforcement within the department. And these are the kinds of things that police service officers handle here and elsewhere around the country. They could have a significant impact. And we've projected that you should add another three within this planning period to handle more of those kinds of lower priority workloads. They don't...
By 2022, you're saying?
Yeah. Twenty-twenty's...
Currently.
Yeah. That's right.
And then, and then another one, I believe, in 2022.
Right. That's right.
Okay. I'm sorry. Let me ask that again. So, the three police service officers are for 2022 or for
Today.
Currently, today?
Today.
Those ones are for today. Right. An additional one will need to be added five years from now in order to maintain that same, same level of service.
Thank you.
And again, just to go through this, these varying strategies, the combination of somewhat, some change in the shift schedule, the redeployment, and the handling of lower priority calls by non-sworn personnel, thereby bringing down the number of calls that police officers have, all cumulatively have the impact of increasing the time they have for problem-solving, proactive policing, community engagement, things like that.
As well as, if I may add, bringing vacancies to kind of a normal level. Because certainly, you'll, you'll always have vacancies, but right now, it's currently at an abnormally, given the rate at which attrition is occurring, it's at an abnormal level. So, once that's brought in the medium term to a more normal level, that proactive capabilities will improve.
Considering what the chief just said?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Or considering the data from last year that you have here?
Both. And we looked at three years of, I believe, turnover, to be able to determine what, what is kind of the average rate of people leaving versus people being hired, and determined that it was about, I think it was around five or seven percent per year. And so, your current vacancy rate, at the time that we did the study, so obviously, that's changed since then, was abnormally much higher than that yearly rate.
Yeah. And again, remember, there, there's two separate issues here. One is the turnover of staff, and the other one is how quickly you get people on and through the academy and field training and all that. And so, your, your turnover itself wasn't all that excessive, but the ability to fill the positions is what backed it up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, to the extent that you can bring sixteen percent of your positions being vacant when we were doing our fieldwork, down to something like five or 10 percent, then that alone impacts some of these maps and graphs that we've been talking about.
Right.
All right.
Just letting you know, we're at six oh six. So, we'll want to finish the staff presentation and the consultant presentation, probably in the next five minutes. Make sure there's enough time for council to react, just to give you a sense. And I'm writing down kind of a summary for all of your recs, that we can make sure that the council's aware of afterwards, because I know this is very technical, very complex, as we had mentioned. So, we want to make sure you kind of know the summary of the recommendations.
So, let me talk about a hundred positions in five minutes.
Yeah.
So, investigations is really pretty simple. There's a, a lot going on here, that the bottom line is, is no change. Investigations is obviously very different than, than patrol. We're talking about thousands of things that they do, rather than counting the proactive things, a hundred thousand things that they're doing in patrol. And there, the workload associated with patrol is, is pretty standardized. I mean, it, most calls take about thirty minutes to respond to and handle, and sometimes they have to write a report after that. Sometimes there's a, a, an arrest that has to be processed. But because there's so many, there's this kind of a pretty simple way of looking at it. Well, it took us four months, but it, it's, it's a straightforward analysis. In investigations, it's very different, because the type of work is very different. They, the, the crime that's committed that needs to be investigated, the characteristics of that crime is different. There's less that's known about it. And the evidence is, is gonna vary quite a bit, which is where they do all of their work. So, in investigations, even more than in patrol, it's all about having an effective process in place, a process of making sure that we have detectives spending their time on high priority crime with large community impacts, especially person crimes, but to make decisions about other kinds of crime that, where there's no evidence and they're relatively minor, to understand that there's still a victim involved, and to do as much follow-up as you can, but don't go through a, a process where the workload, the work that you perform as a detective exceeds your likely outcome. And it's a really important process in investigations, to support victims while, while still spending your time on the higher priority cases that are likely to go somewhere. This department's pretty good. They've been better in the past, because they used to more formally use solvability factors to make these kinds of decisions, and they've been lapsed over the last few years, in part because they've had their own vacancies as well, and that has an impact on formal kinds of, of, of management of investigative resources. So, we've recommended that they reinstitute that process of even a point score, a quantitative kind of process for each case, for detective supervisors to look at where there are leads and suspects and witnesses and those types of things, so that we're, we're spending the time of detectives on cases that are likely to go somewhere. The other thing that happens in investigations over time is that it's much less fluid typically, in terms of staff allocations than patrol is. When you get a unit, it tends to be a sergeant and four or five, and often regardless of what the workload is. And so, sometimes investigative units, yours included, will move the workload around, but keep the unit the same. So, we broke down the workload in terms of person crimes, major crimes, property crimes, special victim kinds of crimes, et cetera, and looked at the investigative process, and in terms of how they manage workloads and the results, and compared you to national standards that are out there in terms of what are the number of cases that a detective can handle on average. And that's lower for person crime typically, in the five to 10 range of cases at any one time, and 10 to 20 for property crime kinds of cases. And we did desk audits with investigators to understand how, the characteristics of those crimes, and how it... those crimes and how it impacted their workload. The net result of all of that is the same, in terms of criminal investigations. We've recommended moving people around within units, but the overall number of people is about the same. It's actually for less, but you have decisions about reallocating them for major crimes or even into patrol. So, that's the net result there. Because they've also been impacted by position vacancies, that has also had an impact on their ability to get work done. So, here, as in patrol, we've recommended that steps need to be taken to better fill positions when you're vacant, when they're vacant, and as the chief mentioned, that's a process that's in flow right now.
So...
As with, yes?
Excuse me, did I just hear you say that, that we should reduce criminal investigations by four positions?
Yes.
Okay. So, I would like to suggest that we do not reduce investigators by four. We can always be prepared for growth. I think that's a proactive point for us to take.
I would point out that the number of positions that you are over is equal to the number of positions that are vacant.
Okay. But we will fill them?
Yes, right.
And then we will still have the other four?
And then you have choices.
Okay.
And there are a number of choices that you have to use those people, either in investigations, the case handling kinds of investigations, or the proactive kinds of investigations, I'll talk about in a little bit. As with patrol, investigations has role for PSOs as well, for non-sworn civilian personnel, to do research, to look at the results of certain kinds of tests, to look at motor vehicle files, to do other kinds of research, crime analysis trends and patterns that you are doing and could do more. So, we've recommended that you add two PSO positions to support detectives, again, to make them more effective, to focus more on the victim handling, to working with suspects in furthering the case. So, what's up? I'm sorry.
You have to wrap it up, Richard.
Okay, I understand. So, same thing with special investigations, is that there are things that they can do to manage their cases, their activity better. It's different than in case handling kind of thing, like in major crimes, in that you need to have a value to the proactive activities that they are engaged in, that they're for problems, community-recognized problems, they've got results, there's analysis to back it up, and we've recommended a process for that. So, again, no change, but making them more effective in the process. So, the projections show that by 2022, you need to add another detective compared to authorized, and another detective by 2027. Special enforcement add two positions by 2022, and two positions, another two positions by 2027. Three of the four positions will be assigned to traffic, which is in special enforcement, and then an additional civilian over 10 years as well. Communications, so, in the time we have, so, there, there, code enforcement is a big issue here. I'll show you a map that shows that there are deployment issues with code enforcement as there are in patrol, we've recommended a redeployment. One thing I want to spend a minute or so on is communications. We've alluded to that before. This is a, a difficult industry throughout the country. National rates of turnover for communications are around 20 percent a year nationwide. It's a very stressful job, typically compensation is an issue too. They're very long hours, and you're not unique to any of that. Right now, with the number of positions that you've had vacant, your 10-hour shift for most staff, many of the days they work, have become 12-hour shifts. So, you get none of the advantages of a 12-hour shift in terms of days off per week, and all of the disadvantages in terms of being overworked and stressed out. So, apparently, they've made some strides to get much, much closer to the number of authorized staff, but you really should consider a 12-hour alternative, once you are appropriately staffed, and to use that as a real stress reliever, because even though the days are longer for three or four days a week, depending on the rotation, staff love it, because you get three or four days on alternating weeks to be refreshed, be with your family, do other types of things. But because of the same workload increases that Ian mentioned with respect to patrol, communications will grow to 31 by 2022, and another to 32 by 2027, so, five or six, depending on the planning period. So, I'm going to leave it there. There's the code enforcement issue right there, in that you've got hotspots mostly in the southern part of the city, and that's resulted in the same kind of map that we showed you for patrol, but by redistributing the code enforcement staff, you can make that much more even. So, again, a shift of resources more from the north than the south. So...
Let me try a quick summary, and then I'd like for council to kind of react to that. And then, obviously, if we need more time, we will figure out a way to do that. We're going to be meeting tomorrow with our police command staff to start going through this and digest it and figure out how to incorporate this in the budget process, or any other needs that would come from it. But quickly, what I'm sensing is that regarding sworn officers, that if we undertake recommendations that the consultants say, shifting times, looking at deployment differently and beat structure, and that does include some migration from north to south, as well as use of PSOs, of which there was an additional three PSOs and a lead in patrol, and also getting vacancies down. If you do those, that we are adequately staffed for our patrol officers to deal with our operations and have the available patrol time.
Okay.
That's one.
So, you alluded to a shift in personnel from north to south, but I have, I didn't hear that in your presentation. I must have missed that.
I believe that when they look at the beat structure, that it's one that migrates slowly, in a way that still provides that coverage, but it slowly has a little bit of a migration down. Is that right? In a quick way?
The boundary remains the same between north and south. It was more that the officers that are currently on teams in the north, just a few of them are moved to the south.
Okay. So, beats are still covered?
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all of this information. I just want to say, before I ask about the shift in the staff, I want to make a comment that I really, truly appreciate this information. Some of it, you know, I, I, well, a lot of it's a surprise to me, some of it isn't. But I think it's important as a council, as, as for everyone, that we see the, the objective numbers that you've put together here for us to be able to make decisions. I see this as recommendations. We're not adopting anything this evening, right? This is just a time for us to absorb all of this, and I think we will need more time, and it deserves more time, to really determine the direction that we go. So, I, I do appreciate the data. The one thing I would say with regard to shifting three from the, the north to the south, or removing four detectives, I, I just can't support removing any personnel. And again, I realize that this is a recommendation, but, you know, we are, in my opinion, you know, the public perception is, is great. People feel really good about the job that we're doing with regards to public safety, and we want to maintain that. We're a growing city, and we want to stay in front of it. So, I think taking away anywhere right now is not a good idea. But again, when you look at the shifts and the percentages, and restructuring of beats, and all of that, I think is very, very helpful in determining how we maybe change what we're doing with what we have, and what, and how we add, and enhance what we already have. By no means can I support taking away from anywhere right now.
And, yes, Councilmember Edwards?
I would agree with Bridget on that. We, we can't do a division of north and south like we've done in the past. If, if we need to add more resources, then we need to add more resources. And I don't care if they're the north or the south, but Jeff, my recommendation is, as you're getting ready for the, the budget talks, is, is to put that, that thought process together and, and look at adding resources now, rather than the recommendation of 2022 or 2027. Let's look at adding some resources now, rather than later, to address that issue now. Thank you.
Well, I'll, I'll just reiterate, I care very much that some goes to the south, because that's obviously where it was shown that we're deficient. I don't want to take anyone from the north, and I totally agree, we don't want to take four away from investigation. But I would ask that we move in the direction of, with these new recruits or laterals or whoever they are, that they be placed first in the south, because that's obviously, we've asked for a report, and that's where the report shows that we need them.
Thank you. Yes.
It's actually working and not like yelling at me. I'm very surprised. I agree with Councilmember Binsbacher and Councilmember Edwards on, on their statements there. I, I think the PSOs would be very helpful to free up some time. I do not, under any circumstances, want to reduce any of the, the current services that we have. I absolutely agree. I need some more time. I'm, I think I'm speaking for the entire council. I need a lot more time to absorb this. I've been able to look through the entire, the entire presentation, all of the numbers. I look forward to reading through that. I really, really enjoy numbers. I'm a weird guy that way. But I want to get a better feel for what the officers that are out in the field, if there's something, I, I want to know how their involvement was and what they're, what they're saying about that, because numbers say one thing, and I could, you know, I, I didn't see a thing about any response times either, about evaluating moving from, from north to south. So, there is a lot more that I need to absorb and I need to look at, but the one thing that I can say unequivocally is, I do not, after this, support any type of reduction in services. I, I'm really interested in the redeployment of the shifts, that type of thing, but I think that takes a little bit more study to look at and, and make sure that that's something that's going to, to work. So, thank you. Appreciate my microphone working.
Councilmember Patena?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this may be a little bit off-script from the study, but I think it's important that I, I ask this question. I think it'll be of Jeff. So, on February 8th, Councilmember Binsbacher, Councilmember Edwards, and myself attended a mixer of all the West Valley elected officials. And one of the topics of discussion was the homeless population. And it's, it appears that there is a rise in every West Valley city with the street homeless. And my question is, we have one officer right now who deals with the homeless population, and we do much more than just put him in a cab and send him downtown to, to a shelter. We actually do outreach, which is really good, and we've had some real success in that area. So, I'm wondering if it would, might be necessary, if there's some research done on the homeless population in Peoria, to determine whether or not we could use another officer in that area as well.
Okay, just one second. Go ahead, if you want to follow up.
It's just a follow-up to Councilmember Patena. So, interestingly that you would mention that, Councilmember Patena. So, in today's Arizona Republic, they had a front-page article about the homeless in Maricopa County, and the fact that the city of, of Phoenix has, is working with MAG to do a new study, and the, the numbers from 2014 to 2017 are staggering. The amount that were at one time in shelters, that are no longer in shelters, but are now out on the street, went from just over 1,000 in 2014 to almost 2,100 this, this last year. And so, there's definitely an issue there, and I think that, to your point, it's becoming more pertinent that there are more homeless out on the street, and I'm not sure that a one officer in our city is going to do, is going to be enough to address that in the, in the growing years. Thank you.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yeah, Chief, how many, oh, here he is. How many code compliance officers do we have now?
Mayor, Councilmember Leoni? When we're looking at staffing for code enforcement, we currently have seven code enforcement officers.
And how are they distributed?
They're distributed evenly between north and south.
One, one in each district?
Well, not one in each district, but by various areas, in the north and the south area.
Okay. What I, what I want to say is that, I'm getting mad now. What I want to say is that, when I first started, everything has changed. I remember when the old-time code compliance officer was here. If I call him up on a complaint, they take care of it. Today, they can't do it, because it's not in the books. I don't know what happened, but everything has just changed completely. So, I'm, I'm making a request that, can we get a committee and go through the code enforcement book, and maybe change something, or add something to it? So, make it better for the city. Because we always have problems with code compliance, and we can't do that, we can't do that, and I get, and the people get tired of it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Just a, a follow-up to Councilmember, Councilmember Leoni's comments. I'm, I'm also wondering if, if code enforcement, should that sit with, in the police department? Is there, is that better served somewhere different? And I don't know what the rest of the studies show, how many other departments have code compliance under the police department, or if it is in community services, or where that may be. So, that would be something that I would ask that we, that we look at. Is that the right place for it? I don't know the answer.
If I may. So, we did have scheduled upcoming study sessions, discussion on city code, and also on some other city appearance-related issues. What I'll do in advance of that is I'll work closely with an internal team to look at code compliance, look at other jurisdictions, and how do they have it? Where is it housed? How would this be related to other neighborhood initiatives that we take? So, we'll do some advance work on that, and think through how best to get that back to you.
Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, while you're doing that, maybe you want to take a look at our park rangers. Maybe they need to be moved from under the police department, so that the police can focus more on their core services, and maybe look at putting them under community services, since they're out in the parks most of the time? Just a recommendation. Thank you.
Yes, I know that there was some comments by the consultants to also look at that and get a question regarding service level, so we'd be happy to do that if that is the interest of the council.
Councilmember Hahn?
I concur with John here. That is exactly what I was going to say. I remember a time that they were under community services, and I think that's where they belong, with the parks.
Thank you. Councilmember Patena?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed you mentioned in your study that you did face-to-face interviews with, with the staff, and that you did ride-alongs. My question is, is there anywhere in this study that addresses morale with the officers?
Not per se, except that the impact of, in communications, for example, with vacant positions and the amount of work they have, is going to have a self-feeding cycle of creating more turnover. But we did not do an assessment of morale, per se.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. Great comments from everyone. I, the homeless outreach, which, thank you for bringing that up, that is, there are detectives running that, right? Is that correct, or is that fall under?
That's correct. Lisa Scott is a detective, and she has that project.
Okay, so, and I just recently had an opportunity to see that firsthand, and it's just fantastic what's being done, and, and it does appear that we need to put more resources on that, so I support that completely. And I'm hoping that when we do have an opportunity, more time to process all this information, that we'll be able to look at the detectives as well, and how we're using those resources to make those decisions. I appreciate this, this is an inclusive, has been an inclusive process, and that you have met with close to 100, I think you said, personnel, which I think is very meaningful. I, I also want to clarify, not, you know, I said I don't want to take away, if we need to add, we need to add. I, my district is the northern part of the city, but I do agree with my fellow council members, we don't want to divide our city in north and south. I don't want to see deficiencies in our city anywhere. And so, I, you know, I, I absolutely support, you know, your desire to make sure that your area is covered. I think we just need to look at the city as a whole and really focus on that. Great question about morale, also about recruitment. In this study, is there anything that'll come back, recommendations about maybe things we might be doing in the way of recruitment and retention? Because obviously, these vacancies are going to occur, so this is going to, this is an ongoing effort. If there's things that you've observed that, you know, based on the other 300 agencies you've, you know, visited and talked to, what we could do differently in those areas? I'd be interested in hearing that as well.
In the report.
Okay.
Glad to talk you about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, so, very good information, obviously, a very broad, comprehensive view. I want to make sure that all of the council members feel fully informed, so I will make a point of getting together to figure out the best way to go about that.
Okay. Counsel? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, so, very good information, obviously, a very broad, comprehensive view. I want to make sure that all of the councilmembers feel fully informed. So I will make a point of getting together to figure out the best way to go about that. And also making sure that we're prepared as we have upcoming study sessions, budget discussions, that we're prepared with recommendations that reflect the comments that you had had here. So more to come on all of that.
Good. Perfect timing with budget right around the corner. All right, then we are adjourned until our 7:00 PM meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Yolanda Boni. I am the President of the American Legion Auxiliary here in Arizona. I'm serving for the year 2017-2018. Our mission is to support the American Legion by honoring the sacrifice of those who serve, by enhancing the lives of our veterans, military and their families, both at home and abroad. We advocate for veterans, educate our citizens, mentor youth, promote good citizenship, Americanism, peace and security.
Welcome back. I'm Jesus Hernandez. As we celebrate the achievements of our veterans, we must not forget their efforts to help youth succeed in life. As part of that effort, members of the American Legion Post 41 have created an annual high school ROTC leadership competition. Retired Air National Guard Colonel Dr. Luyolivas sees the value of challenging the young cadets.
Growing up, going to high school, finishing in high school and all the other high schools, we had ROTC program, but we never saw ourselves there as Latinos. It's amazing of what has transpired since I was in high school. The majority are now Latina and Latinos cadets in the ROTC programs. It teaches them about leadership, about respect, about responsibility, and the importance of furthering their career by going to college. It's not about recruiting students to services, military services. Less than 25% will pursue a military career, for example, or join the armed forces. What makes our competition, we call it a leadership challenge, is aside from drilling and marching, we have a fitness competition. A number of pull-ups, push-ups, set-ups and a 50-foot shuttle run. Competition. The third component, what makes us different, and no one else does this across the country, we have an academic quiz. The history of the flag, the history of presidents and other leadership questions that they should know. It says, who is your commander-in-chief? How many counties are there in the state of Arizona? When did Arizona become a state? So it's type of a civics quiz that was developed by Frank Diaz. And so in order to compete in our event, you must compete in all three. And then depending on the points that you receive in each of the three events determines whether or not you're third place, second place or first place winner by team. And the winning teams, what we call the sweepstakes, are first, second and third. First place gets $1,500, a check written to their school, to their ROTC program. Second place is $1,000. Third place is $500. That's only possible thanks to the generosity and the sponsors that participate in our event. See the value of what's going on with these youth. See the value of coming together. And it's a way of showcasing the service that this post provides to our community. And by the way, this is a statewide competition, so it's not just about Phoenix, it's about Arizona. We had two teams from Tucson. We had one team from Mojave. In a total of 10 teams. Fantastic opportunity. All the volunteers were judges that are veterans. And if you look at the entire turnout, close to 250 people. One example of what this post is doing for the community. An appreciation for youth, an appreciation for who they are and showing them an example of what they can become. Because we have a lot of successful veterans in this post. Former business owners that are retired from banks, sheet metal workers, tradesmen. And they take pride in what they've accomplished. So it's good for the youth to say, you have a future. You too can be a leader of this community and get back. So that's why we do this ROTC competition. This is the second annual and we're planning next year as a third annual event. But more importantly, it was sense that the veterans connected with the youth and the youth connected with the veterans. And the message to the youth was this. We value who you are. We value what you're doing. Keep up the good work. You'll be a better person and a better student. That was clear and that was evident. That was the takeaway.
As we continue to celebrate the achievements of our veterans, it's important to take a moment to recognize the efforts of many individuals and organizations who pay tribute on Veterans' Day to the men and women who helped preserve the liberties we enjoy. Oh glory, our symbol of hope and freedom was proudly on display on Veterans' Day. It was our day to honor those men and women who proudly served and fought in wars to make sure, oh glory, continues to reflect the pride and courage of Americans across the United States.
This is a tremendous day to pay tribute to the courageous men and women of our armed forces. From the birth of our country through many generations, our brave fighting forces gave up the comforts of home to step forward and answer the call to duty. Because they chose to rise to the call, we are here today enjoying the life of freedom that their sacrifice bought for us.
During this Veterans' Day celebration at the Rio Vista Community Park, the city of Peoria unveiled its expanded Arizona Veterans Memorial Wall and Reflection Area. It's an effort by the city to pay tribute to the past, present and future veterans and their families for their sacrifice.
I hope that this memorial offers a new place that affirms your love for America and serves as a small token of our city's gratitude, respect and admiration for your dedicated service.
This day is a solemn day to me because of the brothers and sisters who did not come home from not only the war that I served in, but for all the wars since my time of service.
My name, again, is Norman Palmer. I served in the United States Merchant Marine and I was very proud to have done it. My mother didn't think too much of my choice or the fact that I enlisted. She only wanted me to wait. And, but it was a very interesting three and a half years for me. Emotionally, growing up, maturing, aging, you name it, I went through it.
The newly-dedicated Peoria Arizona Veterans Memorial is an 88-foot-long black wall that recognizes all five branches of the armed forces. It also includes an honor wall for current veterans.
I spent 16 years Army and then went in the Air Force Reserve for another 10. And so I had 26 total. I think that the military should be on the draft. In other words, individuals who get to the age of 18 should go in the military or when they finish high school, go in the military and serve two years of service. It wakes people up. It makes them feel as if they have accomplished something and therefore want to achieve better things when they get out.
Peoria's Arizona Veterans Memorial also includes a new Huey helicopter exhibit. The Huey was considered the workhorse during the Vietnam War. The Army UH-1 Huey recorded more than 7 million flight hours during the Vietnam War between October 1966 and 1975. The achievements of our veterans are many. Dante Fierros is an Air Force veteran who flew missions across Vietnam, not in a Huey. Nowadays, his mission is keeping his manufacturing business running efficiently. The foundation of Dante Fierros' journey as a soldier in the Air Force is based on a strong family philosophy of discipline, work ethic and teamwork. Fierros remembers his father reinforcing the value of an education by having the family work in a plum orchard of Sacramento.
Got on a truck with everybody else. We were assigned a number, my family, mom and dad, my brother and I, in a tent. And there was a little stove out front and every day before sunup, we'd get up and get in on that big truck and we're taken out to fields. And we picked plums all day till it was sundown. And then we came back and there was, I remember this old can with water and holes in the bottom that we used for shower and...
Dante Fierros treasures those childhood memories and admits his father's tough-love lessons worked. Dante graduated with a Bachelor of Science degree. Soon after graduating, back in the late 60s, Fierros says he was trying to land a job with the Xerox Corporation when they asked him to check his draft status and found out his number would soon be called.
This was in 67. The Vietnam War was going, you know, full force. And so they said, check your draft status. And I went to Pasadena, California and checked my draft. They said, young man, you're going to be drafted in two weeks. So I went back to Xerox. They said, well, don't worry, when you get out, we'll have a job for you. So I went and I joined the Air Force. My father was in the Army Air Corps in World War II. So I had a desire to get into the Air Force as opposed to the Marines or the Navy. So just a family tradition. So I joined the Air Force and I asked the recruiting sergeant what kinds of jobs I could get. And I told him of my degree and he kind of smiled and he said, well, we really just need pilots and navigators. And I said, okay, well, I'll try to be a pilot.
Dante became a pilot and attained the rank of major during his 10 years in the United States Air Force. And during that period, he flew a number of missions in Vietnam.
I didn't count the missions. It was many hours. I flew different aircraft. But I first started out with KC-135s, which are air refuelers. So we flew around the north side of Vietnam and refueled aircraft from Da Nang and Saigon and places like that. So that was kind of exciting because we didn't have any kind of defensive systems. We just were a flying gas tank.
After his journey in the Air Force, Dante Fierros has worked for a number of aerospace corporations like Hughes Aircraft, Allied Signal Corporation, General Dynamics, the Department of Defense and others. His decades of experience have served him well. Fierros is now proud owner of Nichols Precision in Tempe, Arizona. It's a manufacturing firm that has developed some impressive hardware for the aerospace industry.
And a lot of these products, we're not told what they actually go on, but one we do know is that we made a product that goes into a communication or electronic box that moves the arm up and down on the Mars Land Rover. Now, that's pretty historic, that here in Tempe, we made a part that's on Mars. We have parts that go on F-16 fighter aircraft that allows the canopy to be blown off so that the pilot can eject safely. We have components that allow the space shuttle to separate correctly from the tanks. Those components that are very, very important and critical. Other products that allow a trooper to fire weapons safely. This is a trigger safety assembly for a missile.
Air Force veteran Dante Fierros has garnered some impressive credentials in the aerospace and manufacturing industry. He credits much of his success to his parents and his military experience.
My name is Dante Fierros and I am president and owner of Nichols Precision here in Tempe, Arizona. I am a US Air Force pilot and I was very proud to serve in the Air Force.
Up next on The Veteran's Business Journey, some words of encouragement from some veterans.
My name is Yolanda Boni. I am the President of the American Legion Auxiliary here in Arizona. I'm serving for the year 2017-2018. Our mission is to support the American Legion by honoring the sacrifice of those who serve, by enhancing the lives of our veterans, military and their families, both at home and abroad. We advocate for veterans, educate our citizens, mentor youth, promote good citizenship, Americanism, peace and security.
Welcome back. This is The Veteran's Business Journey. I'm Jesus Hernandez. We thought it'd be helpful to share with you some words of encouragement from veterans who have overcome some challenges and have succeeded in their professional endeavors.
My words of encouragement to a veteran, first of all. You must realize what you have to offer. It is tremendous and it's becoming more and more important every day, and that's your work ethic.
Well, I think that to be successful, it's really important to be passionate about what you're doing. So to believe in what you're doing and to, like they talk about, you know, it's not just a job. It's not just about making money. It's about doing something that you truly like to do and believe in.
Definitely, don't try to do it on your own. Do seek the support of others because other people will provide you with input and resources. And when you're working with the law of attraction, it's very powerful to let others know what you're doing.
With a good work ethic, with an education, there's no telling where you can end up. And, but the end result is, is not a monetary success, it's a success of happiness. A success that you contributed to our society, that you contributed to your family and that you're happy.
The Veteran's Business Journey is about honoring our veterans and celebrating their journey in life. We'd be honored if you'd drop us a note. Our email address is vetsbizjourney@gmail.com. Be sure to stay tuned to this channel for the next edition of The Veteran's Business Journey. I'm Jesus Hernandez, a proud Vietnam veteran. This program was made possible in part by the American Legion Auxiliary, Department of Arizona and the West Valley Foundation, celebrating diversity.
Do you remember how we met?
Of course I do. What you're going to tell me anyway because it's part of the game. So get in with it.
Very well. Once upon a time, there was a lonely man in a lonely city.
Oh, God, take me now.
What's wrong?
Just get to the good part and make it snappy. I've got a hot date waiting for me backstage and she's a real doll face.
Okay. Well, once upon a time, this lonely man walked into a used magic store and met the one person who would change his life forever. one person who had changed his life forever.
I'm kind of a big deal.
I'm sorry, my little friend. It wasn't you. It was an old magician.
Where do I come in?
Well, in the back storage room, the magician kept all kinds of toys and trinkets that he would not sell to the general public. These were his most prized possessions.
Right, so obviously...
And in the far back, he kept what he called, very tenderly, his junk pile.
What?
And in the far, far, far back room is where he'd set aside you.
Right, so obviously you saw that there'd been some kind of a mistake or I'd been mistreated and I had some kind of a twinkle in my eye, right?
No. I bought you because you were on sale. And he said you could talk.
Well, at least tell me that the shop was in Paris.
No. It was in Phoenix.
What? Well, you mean you bought me from some cuckoo old Merlin wannabe in a dusty junk shop in the desert? I sure hope my date didn't hear that. Thanks a million, Morty. I'm out of here.
Are you sure you want to go?
Well, let's just say all the great men in the world are dead except one, and I'm not feeling well.
How about this time slot? Thursday night, May. Case of death. Reserved for those special shows on the way out the door. Just a pack of men. Just wait for us in droves. Got any bright ideas? Yes, what is it?
George would like me to help you clean your dressing room. How does it work?
What?
How do you make him talk?
Trade secret. Be careful with those.
I've got the boxes outside. I have to put them together first.
Boxes?
Yes.
Why would you need boxes?
George didn't tell you? I guess the theater can't pay you anymore and you can't live here anymore.
Take that, you rotten scoundrels! Oh, away from me, you fools!
Get back, you ruffians, for it is I, the amazing Mortimer with his companion, Sir Thomas of Mesa, who shall thwart your evil plans and bring about your everlasting doom.
Captain, what's our next move?
They got us surrounded. Let's get behind the barricade and wait for reinforcements.
Aye, aye, Captain.
Oh, no. What shall we do? What shall we do?
Pull yourselves together, man!
Sorry, this is the first action I've ever seen.
It's okay, I've got a plan.
What's your plan?
Troll. Yes, under that bridge over there. Just use your magic to summon trolls here to help us win this battle.
Use my magic?
You are a magician, aren't you?
No.
Oh, no. Oh, no, no. We're doomed now.
Sir, what shall we do? They're closing in.
There's only one thing left to do. Run!
Yes!
Come on, get up, go!
Well, I must say, you've been given a fine imagination. What do your parents do?
I lived with my dad and it was nice. He used to play with me and we'd tell stories about dragons and battles. We would always win.
Used to? What happened to him?
He got really sick and he died. I don't really like to talk about it.
I'm sorry.
Uncle George doesn't like to tell stories. I live with him.
I'm sure he takes very good care of you.
Yeah.
Hey, kid! Morty got you doing his chores?
No, I'm supposed to be helping him move out.
What?
It's okay. I'm moving out too. Uncle George told me about this school on a ranch. Told the kids, "Live and go to school together." He's going to drive me over to go look at it tomorrow.
Sounds nice.
It could be fun.
You know, kid, sometimes in life, it seems like we don't get a fair shake or we wish things could stay the same forever and they just can't. But I've just got to say that as tough as it is sometimes, life has a way of working out for the best. You believe that for us and we'll believe that for you, okay?
Okay.
Now that I've doled out my pontiferous wisdom, do you have any questions for me?
How does it work?
Magic!
Really? I have to go.
Well, it's nice to have made a new friend.
Yep.
Thomas! I think you need someone to keep you company more than I do. Stretch out your arms. Take care, old friend. See, this is how it works. There's very little mystery to it. Yeah.
Bye, Mortimer.
Goodbye, Thomas. Take care.
Watch out for trolls.
Yeah, I will. Goodbye.
Can I? Thank you.
...of the speaker's podium labeled Request to Speak. All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the City Council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of a speaker's request have not been listed on the agenda and due to the requirements of open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms are received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council meeting.
Peoria City Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Edwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet?
Here.
Vice Mayor Finn?
Here.
Councilmember Patana?
Here.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Leoni?
Here.
Council Liaison Acosta?
Here.
Council Liaison Gitres?
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council meeting of February 20th, 2018. The first item on the agenda this evening is the presentation of certificates to board and commission members. And I would like to ask Vice Mayor Finn, the Chair of the Council Subcommittee for Boards and Commissions, to meet me on the chamber floor.
She's going to turn this right over to me, huh? You're a brave mayor, I'm telling you right now. So we have a couple of certificates of appointment that we're going to hand out. I believe they're both to the same individual. Before I do that, this always gives me an opportunity to thank all of the volunteers who volunteer their time to help us with our boards and commissions, volunteer time for the city. We would not be able to do what we do without those volunteers. So I always take this opportunity to thank everyone for that. So we have Joshua Champion, who is on the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, local board for both fire and police. And as such, you get two presentations as opposed to one. We appreciate you volunteering your time and helping us. It's very important. You can do a little selfie there. There you go. Well done.
Thank you much.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to the consent agenda. So tonight's consent agenda includes items that require a public hearing. If there are any members of the public present who want to address a public hearing on the consent agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. This item will be removed from consent and heard during the normal course of the regular agenda. Is there a member of the public that would like to address a public hearing that is on the consent agenda? Seeing none, council, are there any items to be removed from consent? Do I have a motion?
A motion.
A motion and a second. Council, please vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to new business, which consists of a series of public hearings this evening. The first one is Item 16R. This is a public hearing, initial zoning, Life in Christ Lutheran Church at 14802 North 75th Avenue. And we're ready for a staff report. Mr. Time?
Great, thank you, Mayor. And Chris Hockes, our Planning and Committee Development Director, will provide the presentation. And this is an action item.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 16R, this is a city-initiated rezone to assign initial zoning to property that was recently annexed under state statute. The property is indicated on red on the screen. It's at the northwest corner of 75th and Banth Lane. It consists of about 2.19 acres. It is the home of the current Life in Christ Lutheran Church. So the request tonight is to rezone the property from its zoning district in the county from Row 43 to the Peoria Suburban Ranch or SR 43 zoning district. Okay, this slide illustrates the annexation and initial zoning process at a glance. The process for both are quite detailed in the state statute. The council adopted the annexation ordinance to annex a church on September 25th, 2017. That was effective 30 days later. State statute now requires that the city establish initial zoning within six months of that effective date. And so it also requires that when And so it also requires that when we look at the initial zoning, that we identify zoning that permits, does not permit densities or uses more intense than that permitted in the county. So what that means in practice is that we try to assign the most equivalent or most analogous zoning district that we have in the city that matches up with the county zoning. This graphic illustrates the zoning in the current area. The property is identified in red, it's zoned rural 43, or one acre zoning in Maricopa County. You can see the zoning to the north, R18, R118, 18,000 square feet to the east. The proposed cities, the city zoning, or our most equivalent would be our suburban ranch, which also requires a minimum lot size of one acre and is our, more of our semi-rural zoning district. So the process is similar that we accomplish, like we do for rezones, with one difference is that we don't require neighborhood meetings with an initial zoning application. They're seen as more perfunctory in this case, but we do provide notification to all properties within a 600-foot radius, both at the time of application and when hearing, postcards are sent out. Throughout the process, the city has not received any correspondence in opposition or support to the initial zoning application. We did hold a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission on January 18th. There were no speakers present from the general public, and after deliberation, the commission recommended approval of this case. Findings that we've identified is that the state statute does require us to assign initial zoning. The zoning must be equivalent and not permit greater density or uses than what was held in the county, and we've identified the SR 43 district to be the closest equivalent to that held in the county of rural 43. So with that, Mayor and Council, we, the recommendations is we concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation and assign initial zoning of suburban ranch on the newly annexed parcel. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions for Mr. Hockes? Is that...did I hear? No? Okay. All right. I declare this public hearing open. Is there a member of the public who would like to speak to any items on this issue? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Council, any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I move we concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Item 16R passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next public hearing is Item 17R, rezoning Marriott 75th Avenue and Paradise Lane. Mr. Time?
Thank you again, and again, Mr. Hockes will provide the presentation, and it is an action item.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 17R, this is a proposed amendment to the underlying PAD or planned area development zoning for the property located at the southwest corner of Paradise Lane and 75th Avenue. This amendment was filed on behalf of Menne Peoria LLC, on behalf of the landowner. The proposal before us tonight contemplates development of what's called a dual-branded 198-room hotel under the Marriott flag on the property. So to accomplish this, the applicant's proposing a change to the current PAD zoning, currently which does not permit a hotel land use, and then some of the associated standards are looking forward to adjustment to it. In terms of site and area context, the property is shown in yellow, it consists of a vacant property of approximately 3.3 acres. It's a regular site, it's hemmed in by the Arizona Canal Diversion Channel to the south, the Skunk Creek to the west. To the north of the property is an existing commercial center, and then the 16 acres that's vacant to the east is currently a proposal that we have in review for a urban-style multifamily residential complex called Paradise at P83, and that, like I indicated, is pending right now. So contextually, the property has a intersection at Paradise and 75th Avenue. The property is in what we call the P83 Entertainment District. This is a property that is identified as a secondary core. Most of the activity, as you know, is concentrated at Peoria, at the 83rd Avenue, which is a signature street in Peoria and P83, and much of the commercial activity on Bell Road. As you all are aware, the P83 or the, is a result from the Sports Complex Urban Design Plan that was approved in 2010, and really what it saw was a transformation of the entire district, and the entire district being all the property you see essentially north of the Skunk Creek Channel and east of Loop 101 in the city of Peoria. And the idea was that it be transformed into a district that had a mix of uses, was pedestrian-focused, and provided for entertainment, hospitality, residential, and commercial. Okay, the graphic on the left is the general plan land use map. As I indicated, with the adoption of the Urban Design Plan in 2010, the entire district was re-designated as the Sports Complex Mixed Use Designation. The graphic on the right, that signifies what the existing zoning in the area. The property in question is currently zoned PAD. I'll talk about what that entitlement is in a minute, but the zoning in the area reflects really an era prior to the channelization of the canal. And what I mean by that is if you look at the zoning across 75th Avenue to the east, the vacant property, that's actually zoned planned light industrial, so it reflects a former time. The property to the west, across Skunk Creek Channel, is zoned as a planned area development, includes both, as you know, multifamily, entertainment, and commercial land uses, and then the property to the north, the small commercial retail center, is zoned C2 or intermediate commercial. So a little bit of the background of the site in question. That site was zoned in 2007 to a planned area development. Again, a planned area development is a customized zoning district. At that time, the use that was conceptualized or contemplated was a four-story building up to 60 feet in height. It contemplated a mix of uses, including restaurant, retail, and office uses. The use listing in that PAD was very extensive, however, did not include hotel or motel uses as an allowable use, hence the amendment we're seeing tonight. Thereafter, in 2010, as I indicated on a prior slide, the city adopted the Sports Complex Urban Design Plan, which really changed the way it saw the entire district in terms of its transformation and the vibrancy that the community is looking to usher into the area. This graphic illustrates the conceptual development plan. So this is a four-story dual-branded hotel, and that term dual-branded is indicated to mean that there are, there are some savings of administrative overhead in a hotel that offers two brands under the Marriott flag. So one wing would be the Town Place Suites at Marriott, and another wing would be the Fairfield Inn and Suites. Some of the savings for the administrative overhead would be common areas for check-in, parking, breakfast areas, amenities on the site, and a laundry facility. It's a building that includes up to 100,000 square feet of building area, which is 198 rooms in total. Some of the amenities that's featured on the property includes a rooftop pool over the lobby area, the lobby area being right in the middle. It also includes an ancillary bar and restaurant, small meeting rooms for guests. Some of the site features include a 10-foot sidewalk along Paradise Lane to give it that sense of walkability in the district. There is other enhancements that are also on the property to reinforce the P83 image and design. One of those, if you look at the upper left-hand corner, the P83 monument sign, that's a sign that will be installed as part of this application, this development, at the northeast corner, so where 75th and Paradise Lane converges, but it will provide additional entry identification into the P83 district and this property. Some of the site access, there will be two points of access, one along Paradise Lane that will offer full access, meaning somebody traveling westbound on Paradise Lane can access the site, a left-in into the site, and somebody could also take a right-out. It doesn't indicate it on the screen, but the access at 75th Avenue will also be a full access, and so somebody could enjoy full access into the site and out of it. So there'll be left turns that are also available northbound on 75th Avenue. These are some of the elevations that have been proposed. Now, the elevations will be further refined during the site plan and design review process, but I think this gives you a good indication of the scale and scope of what this hotel will look like in the, on the property. The upper portion, that's the portion that you will see from Paradise Lane, and then you can see the other elevation, the south elevation, which will be facing the ACDC Channel. The building proposed would be up to 65 feet in height, which is very similar to the existing entitlement. So I'll go over some of the alterations because in addition to including hotel use as an allowable use in the PAD, there, the applicant is also requesting some modifications to the PAD. In the existing PAD, the height allowance was for 60 feet plus additional height needed for, to screen mechanical equipment. In this application, they're looking for just, just make it a number at 65 feet, which will also include the screening of mechanical equipment. The front setback has been reduced from 40 feet to 10 feet, and again, that's to reflect the urban scale, the orientation that we're promoting to Paradise Lane, give it a more urban feel. The landscape width will also be reduced from 15 feet to seven feet, that also allows for the sidewalk to be enlarged to 10 feet in size. And then as part of the reviewing the parking requirements, the ratio was modified to better reflect industry standard. Peoria reportedly was a little bit on the high side, so not only this is, reflect industry standards, but it also accounts for an increase in Uber and Lyft usage to a destination. So that's the parking per room. There is also parking assignments for the employees and also for the bar and restaurant uses on-site, in addition to what you see here. Public outreach process...
Excuse me, Chris, before you move on from that last slide, can we talk for a little bit about the reason that we have chosen to change our design standards? I mean, normally, there is some kind of give and take with that. I'm not sure that I see that in this case, and to go, and the front setback is of great concern especially to me.
Right. Good question, Mayor, members of the council. The existing standards, they reflect the PAD that was put in place in 2007, which was prior to the Sports Complex Design Plan. And so with this new proposal, there was a recognition that we're looking for projects to have more of an urban feel to them, and so what we're trying to do is have the building embrace Paradise Lane, be pushed to the street as much as practical, and so that's what the reduction in the front setback, the minimum reduction, is trying to accomplish. That, along with the landscape width, is trying to give it a more urban feel than we might have with traditional development that we might see in the community.
And I can appreciate that for sure. Can you go back to the graphic? That one, yeah. So it does appear that there is still a large parking lot in front, so not so new and urban, more traditional as in the past, like a strip center.
Mayor, members of council, so it's always difficult with a site that's only about 3.3 acres in size to accommodate all the parking and the, and the use of the site. So what we try to do is work with them on some of the standards so that the building could be moved up as mo, as much as, you know, practical. So typically with, with the existing standard, would have been a 40-foot setback, so you can see that wing that's on the far left, that would have had to have been pushed much further back than, than it's indicated on the screen, and that probably would have disrupted the fire corridors that are required around the building, and it might not have, it might not have been able to accommodate this type of use on this property.
So, so the area on Paradise is, is going to look very much like a large parking lot with a tall building very close to it. Am I reading that wrong?
Mayor and Council, to meet the demands of the room and the activities on the site, there is a certain amount of parking that is required. It has to be placed somewhere, but the, but there was also an importance, I think, from the applicant's perspective, to provide a nice entry, and so what's hard to envision on this, on this graphic is the porticocher that occurs in front of the lobby area. You can see that, kind of that roundabout area that occurs. So it's attempting to accomplish that. I think what we're trying to do is, you know, with a very small property, trying to move it closer to a more of an urban context. It's very difficult, though, on a, on a site like this.
All right, so let's just take one more look at the, at the graphic that shows the building. So how, how are our design standards incorporated into these buildings?
Mayor and Council, our, our design standards will come and, will continue to come in play when we see the site plan application. So part of that is looking at the building elevations, and so I, as you probably know, we require so many windows, and we require roofline variation, require pop-outs, and so many different features to avoid a boxy appearance, and so that's what our design standards will try to accomplish, proper connectivity as well, and it's just very difficult to move the building all the way to the front beat and meet the proper fire turnarounds, provide the, the proper identification and site entry that the applicant's looking for. So we try to accomplish that in different measures that require changes to some of the standards.
I would like to suggest that we review our design standards as quickly as we can because new development is happening, and new development is quickly going to look like old development. You know, if we're trying to go for more urban design standards, then we need to change our standards to reflect that, that has a bit of a flavor of, of an urban environment as well as gathering places and shade and walkability. I'm not seeing any of those things here. I get it that it's just a conceptual plan here, but I hope that you will be looking at those as you are reviewing the plans, and then I, I really think that we need to make our design standards match who we want to be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so in terms of the public outreach, we, we provide a notification to all properties within a 600-foot radius. A neighborhood meeting was held on December 19th at the Peoria Chamber of Commerce. We did have two area residents in attendance, plus the Vice Mayor Finn and Councilmember Edwards were there as well. The attendees asked questions about the project, but they felt in general that the project would be beneficial to the area. Throughout the life of the application, we have not received any letters in support or opposition to this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on February 1st, 2018. There were no speakers present from the general public, and after deliberation, the commission recommended approval of the case. Key findings: we believe that the amendment conforms to the Sports Complex Mixed Use Designation. We believe it will help advance goals and character, including helping to activate the area. This has been a property that's been difficult to, to tenant in the past, it's a property, it's an area that arguably is difficult for retail and restaurant usage because I think those uses are probably more pulled to the 83rd Avenue frontage and probably along Bell Road as well. This is a great use for the property, it will help provide for daytime traffic and help activate the area from a foot-traffic perspective. And so we believe it better reflects the development needs in the area. So with that, Mayor and Council, we do recommend that the council concur with the commission recommendation and approve the amendment to the PAD to facilitate, facilitate a hotel, subject to conditions 1 through 8. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions? Yes. Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, maybe you or the applicant can talk a little bit about the, where they saw the need for having a hotel in this area, because I know with the area expanding, with rapid business growth, is there a study that was taken, that took place that shows that there's a need for this, this type of development in that area? Because I know that this property at one time had, a, a previous person had come wanting to do senior retirement, which obviously didn't fit the area, but this is more in line with what the Entertainment District needs, is more hotels, and can you talk a little bit about some of that study that, that the applicant was able to provide?
Mayor, Councilmember Edwards, if you don't mind if I defer to the applicant on that matter?
If you don't mind, it's Gerald. Or Jerry Gagnepain, I'm with Land Architects, the project manager and project architect on this particular project. We worked with the staff for some, several months, many months now, to get this project to this point. Speaking directly to the demand, we looked at the P83 and its growth, and it's actually a slow, slow process in the early stages. Also, one of the biggest issues that seem to be hindering growth is the availability of user-serving accommodations. So we see some hotels in the area, but we don't, we see it's very underserved at this point. Marriott typically requires their own feasibility studies prior to approving a franchise, which they have done, we haven't, they haven't shared that with us. They approved the site for dual-brand, thinking that we do have sort of two different markets in that particular location, and felt that this was a highly appropriate site, especially with the Peoria Sports Complex and its vicinity, the Entertainment District combined. So Phil, it's a very, very necessary project, whether it's our hotel or some other hotel, definitely user-serving accommodations, and it's, and it's accompanying transient occupancy taxes, a benefit to the community, I believe.
So a question for you then, Mayor, if I may. Occupancy rate, because, you know, obviously during spring training, there's a lot of people, but how did you, how'd you account for occupancy rate outside during the summer months when, when there aren't spring training games going on?
Well, this particular type of hotel also serves several different types of demographic groups, including business travelers, family travelers, vacation travelers, as well as not just the entertainment district. We're not, we're not, you know, we don't have stars in our eyes like they built around the stadium, the, you know, the University of Phoenix, or the Cardinal Stadium, where everybody built these hotels thinking they're going to get rich for a Super Bowl, and these hotels sat empty for, for years after that, and finally they're done being absorbed. This is an area that we feel is underserved, and even during the summer months, where there are business travelers still come to Peoria, and that Peoria's state of growth right now, again, is, we feel is underserved for this quality of a product. And Marriott is a quality product, I think will definitely be a beneficial, you know, addition to that particular area.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Leoni?
Now, this is for Chris. I just want to ask...
I just want a yes and no answer, nothing else. Since 1999, I've been trying to get a convention center in here. Are they going to put one in this hotel?
Mayor, Councilmember Leoni, there is no convention center proposed for this hotel.
There isn't any?
No.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further comments or questions? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, and I declare this public hearing open. Yes, please.
Just add to what Councilmember Leoni was saying, I think especially, like, when I'm helping my parents pick a hotel, like, obviously, I want something to look forward to when I go, like, I think you said there was, like, a rooftop pool, or, I think it's just something to consider, like, a convention center, like you mentioned, something fun for the kids to look forward to, go to when they're at a hotel. Yeah, that's all that I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, Council liaison Acosta, it's, I understand, a desire for a convention center. I think what we're talking about is a very small, confined property, and so we have to, when you include those uses, you have to find parking, not only for the rooms, the bar, restaurant, but also the convention center. It would require a much bigger property for structured parking.
All right, so this is public hearing, and I have declared this public hearing open. Is there any members of the public who would care to address this issue? All right, seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Counsel, any further comments? May I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. We will now move on to item eighteen R for our next public hearing. This is the rezoning of Ninety-Ninth Avenue and Hedgehog Place. Mr. Tyne.
Great, this is the last item by Mr. Hockes, who also have the public hearing and is in action.
Thanks again, Jeff. Mayor and council. Item eighteen R, this is a proposed rezon filed by I Plan Consulting Corp. on behalf of the property owner, Jarvis Capital Investments. This property pertains to an infill property of approximately 2.25 acres. It's located about three-quarters of a mile north of Jomax Road and Ninety-Ninth Avenue. You can see it red on the screen. More specifically, it's at the northeast corner of Ninety-Ninth Avenue and Hedgehog Place. The request this evening is to rezone the property from general agricultural, or ag, to single-family residential, R110. R110 requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. If successful, the rezon would facilitate the planned subdivision of the property into six lots. This graphic provides a closer look at area conditions. Again, the property is identified in red. It's surrounded on the north, east, and south by Pleasant Valley Planned Community. There's a Pleasant Valley retention basin that's on the south side of budding the property. The budding homes in Pleasant Valley were built around 2004, and they consist of both one- and two-story homes, lot sizes in Pleasant Valley in this area that about the property range between 10,500 square feet, 12,000 on the east, and around 15,000 square feet on the north. To the west, across Ninety-Ninth Avenue, is the Tierra del Rio Planned Community. Lots in this area were constructed in 2016, are continuing through to today. They also consist of both one- and two-story homes. Lot sizes are approximately 11,000 square feet in size. This graphic here provides a bird's-eye view of some of the area conditions. Again, this is an infill property. Ninety-Ninth Avenue provides direct access to this property. It's designated as a collector roadway, one lane in either direction with a center median. And as you know, Ninety-Ninth Avenue presently terminates about a quarter mile to the north. This graphic illustrates the general plan land use map on the left. The property and the surrounding areas in the yellow are all designated low-density residential with a two-to-five-unit-per-acre density, three units per acre being the target density. This designation supports traditional neighborhoods with lots generally between 8,000 to 12,000 square feet and above. The graphic to the right illustrates the current zoning in the area. So the subject property itself is zoned general agricultural. This is what we see typically as a holding zone, where property is held in less intense form until a development proposal comes along, in this case. The zoning to the northeast and south, the Pleasant Valley, is all part of a planetary development. And then the property across the west, across Ninety-Ninth Avenue, is Tierra del Rio. That's its own planetary development, as I indicated. Lot sizes on the west side, generally 11,000 square feet with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet in size. So this is the conceptual development plan. Again, what's contemplated is six single-family lots with a density resulting of about 2.67 units per acre. So it does fall a little bit short of that target density of three units per acre. Again, what's contemplated is R110 zoning, so not a PAD in this case, but straight R110 zoning, 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size. With that, the actual lots will range between 10,275 square feet and 10,730 square feet. Homes in this zoning district could be thirty feet or no more than two stories. As I indicated, access would be from Ninety-Ninth Avenue. Open space, we report on that in other zoning cases, other larger zoning cases. Our design manual does not require usable open space when you have under ten lots. So while there is no designated usable open space, I will point out that the area in green, the dark green, that's a sixty-five-foot-wide buffer retention area that will be, will provide a nice entry into the development from Ninety-Ninth Avenue. Again, our notification procedures went to all properties within a six-hundred-foot radius. We did hold a neighborhood meeting that was held on December sixth, 2017, at the Cross of Glory Church at seven o'clock. The, we did have five members of the public attended, and I would characterize the questions as inquiry in nature. They asked questions about the lot sizes, the home prices, whether this was going to be a gated community, how long would it take to build, how big are the homes going to be, and so forth. It is important to point out that no one spoke in direct opposition, and attendees were relieved that the lot sizes and density were similar to what that is in the area. Through the life of the case, we have not received any correspondence in opposition or support to this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on January eighteenth. At that evening, there were no speakers present from the general public, and the commission unanimously recommended approval of the case. So key findings: At 2.67 inches per acre, the rezon and the R110 zoning district does conform to the general plan low-density residential designation of two-to-five units per acre, target of three. And we do believe that this proposal is a nice infill project. It will provide a development and standards that are compatible and conforming to neighboring properties. And with that, Mayor and council, the recommendation is that the council concur with the commission recommendation and approve the rezon of this infill property from ag to single-family residential, subject to conditions one through sixteen. With that, I'll ask any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Hockes? No? All right. This is a public hearing. I declare this public hearing open. Are any members of the public who would like to address this issue? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. All right, counsel, further discussion? Motion? We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hockes. Next item on the agenda is call to the public for non-agenda items, and I do not have any speaker request forms. So we will move on to reports from city manager. Mr. Tyne.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And just a quick item, and thank you very much for the feedback and tonight's, comments tonight, especially with regard to the PAD discussion over in the PAD three area. And we'll make sure as a staff to follow through on the items that all of you had brought up, and more to come on that piece. Real quick, I wanted to announce some great news. And with us today, we have Lisa Estrada, our Economic Efficiency and Sustainability Manager, to talk about a recent award in sustainability that the city received.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, Mayor and council. I am, sorry, just, good evening, Mayor and council. I am happy to announce that the city of Peoria has been presented with the Star Community Rating Award. This marks an important milestone in our sustainability journey. About a year and a half ago, we embarked down a path of self-discovery. This discovery has revealed our greatest strengths, our challenges, and opportunities as it relates to our economic, social, and environmental sustainability endeavors. The end goal is to determine where we are on the scale of becoming a truly sustainable community. If you follow the topic of sustainability, you can make a judgment call on whether you might think where we stand in a certain given area. However, through this effort, we are no longer, we're no longer have to speculate. We have data-driven information that will help us chart our course and help us determine the best possible way to move forward here in Peoria. Although I'm mostly here tonight to present this award, I also want to take a few moments to provide context and definition on the STAR Community Rating System. STAR stands for Sustainability Tools for Assessing and Rating Communities. First, we know that sustainability can be hard to articulate, and as it means, different things to different people. And the way I like to describe it to our new employees during new employee orientation is that it means that the city of Peoria will strive to make decisions today that will not undermine the quality of life of future generations and their own ability to access the same, if not greater, resources that we have today. We seek to find balance between community, the economy, and natural environment. STAR Communities is a nonprofit organization that works to advance a national framework to evaluate and certify sustainable communities in North America. They rate communities on forty-five objectives, including economic, environmental, and social performance measures. STAR's rating criteria are designed to assess communities' sustainability efforts in a clear, data-driven way. Nearly 200 volunteers representing fifty cities and counties, state and federal agencies, nonprofits, national associations, and universities, utilities, and private corporations contribute thousands of hours and diverse expertise to the development of STAR Community Rating System. So it's a very robust, very complex, and thorough rating system that was built for cities by cities. By serving on the steering and technical and ad hoc committees, these volunteer experts led the development of the framework, credits, methodologies for measurement, and requirements for achieving and maintaining the STAR Community Rating. Local leaders use a rating system to assess their current level of sustainability, to set targets for moving ahead, and measure progress along the way. Peoria is only, is one of only seventy cities across the U.S. that has achieved this rating. The STAR framework of goals and objectives helps communities assess their efforts in seven key areas to define sustainability for themselves. Underneath this nice and robust, nice-looking chart, there are forty-five objectives and over 500 outcomes and action measures. So it's quite a big, complex ordeal, and a monster, if you will, of data diving that we've had to complete here. There was, like I said, a time-intensive process, and because of this, I'd like to extend my appreciation to the many employees of the city who contributed many, many hours to this effort. I hope they're still my friends, because it was, it was a lot. So STAR allows us to set a clear path for sustainability with helpful tools that measure and track progress towards meaningful results that save money and improve our community. This evening is a starting point for the work that will be taking place as we begin to sift through the results and understand the data and what it means to Peoria. The goal is to utilize these results to support and strengthen our existing council-adopted sustainability action plan while providing clear direction based on the city's priorities. Thank you, Mayor and council, for your ongoing support and leadership in sustainability. And on behalf of the STAR Community Rating Organization, I'd like to present to you, Mayor and council, this award. And if I may, I'd like to read what it says on the plaque. It says, "STAR Communities recognizes the city of Peoria for providing a healthy environment, a strong economy, and a well-being for all residents, now and for the future generations."
Wow.
That's all I have.
Congratulations. It's really a great award for the city of Peoria. Thank you so much for all that you do for that. And the definition, again, of sustainability?
What, excuse me?
The definition, again, of sustainability?
Well, the way is balancing making decisions today that will not undermine the ability for future generations to achieve their own goals. So it's a legacy that we all, through your leadership, will leave behind.
Yeah, it's responsible growth, responsible governance, and thinking about the future of our city. I really appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Great, thank you. Just a quick, and thank you, Lisa, for all your effort. This was not only an immense amount of effort to put that forward, it also is a benchmark for us in going forward on how we look at the triple bottom line of sustainability and looking at ourselves in that way. So a great accomplishment and great work by Lisa and our staff to accomplish that. One last item was with the departure of Julie Arundel to the city of Goodyear recently, that left an opening for deputy city manager position. And I'm eager to present an internal candidate for that spot, and that is Katie Gregory, who I'm going to make stand right now. Katie Gregory is our newest deputy city manager. She has been a long-term employee, dare I say, seventeen years, eighteen years now here at the city. She began her career here in the community services department, which involved in much of the parks and recreation, library, sports facilities-related area. From there, she's moved on to very important positions as development coordinator, right in the midst of our highest development activity, as our CIP coordinator, and of course, as our budget director, where she's managed literally over a half a billion dollars of our taxpayer dollars in any given year. She is an outstanding employee and well-respected by all, not only in the organization, but within the overall broader Phoenix community. And she's also a very busy wife and mother of three. Katie will be overseeing much of the management administrative functions for the city. That includes finance, communications, budget, city clerk, and intergovernmental affairs. So we have her very busy. Great, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Welcome and congratulations, Katie. I can't imagine anyone else deserving that more. My goodness, I remember when you were in Parks and Recreation, and seeing you go to budget and impact fees before that, I couldn't imagine. I thought you needed to stay in Parks and Recreation, but now I see that you have just a bigger, broader scope all the way around. So thank you for everything that you've brought to our city. All right, that's all, Mr. Tyne? Okay, we will move on to reports from city council, and we'll start with youth council liaison Acosta.
Again, congratulations, Katie. Now I'm just wondering who will replace her? Oh, man. Well, I know you're going to do very well, and I wish you the best of luck. So my high school's been very busy, a ten centennial. And last week, we had our Rack Week, which is Random Acts of Kindness. And we hosted Beat the Beady's, which is just, it's like a talent show. It's five dollars per person, and all the proceeds, I'm not quite sure which foundation or organization it was, but I know it was, it's a man that started it here in Peoria, and it's, I think it's proceeds that go to Africa, where they're having all the water droughts and everything. So our school is being very involved in our community. And along with that, last week, we were considered for the A++ Award. I'm not quite sure if we got it, but we are doing very well in our education, too. The Youth Advisory Board is hosting a job fair on March fifth, and we already have two big bags of clothing collected. If any of you are interested in donating lightly-used business attire, that will be donated to the youth in attendance there. You could take it to Centennial High School, or just drop it off at the community services department, and we will be glad to take that. That's all that I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. On February eighth, Councilmember Binzbacher and Councilmember Edwards and I attended the West Valley Council Mixer. It's an, it was at the Heather River Arena. It's an opportunity for all of the West Valley elected officials to get together and talk with one another, strategies, and different things that they do to continue to move their city forward. And this is, as I mentioned in the study session, this is where they came up with the issue on homelessness. And they think it's going to be a big deal in the West Valley, and so I think the city's doing the right thing by addressing it quickly. On February thirteenth, myself and Councilmember Edwards had lunch with some of the students at Sunrise Mountain High School. Always amazes me how bright these young adults are and the ideas they come up with for how to work collectively with the, with their government. It was, it was a great day. Congratulations to Katie Gregory, who is now the deputy city manager. I've watched Katie throughout the years in different departments, and lastly, last department she was in was budget. You've always heard me mention, how does she get all those numbers in her head? But somehow she did. Katie, I'm sure you're going to do a great job, and we're happy to have you. And also, congratulations to Barry Hoag, who accepted the position of the interim director. I I, I, I know this for a fact. I've watched Barry work for a number of years, and there will be no slowdown in budget. He has just as many numbers in his head as Katie has in hers. So congratulations, Barry. Lastly, to Lisa Estrada for helping us win the award as a STAR Community Award. It just proves that the city of Peoria is providing a higher quality of life for Peoria residents through sustainability. We are, like you said, one of only seventy cities throughout the country to get that award, and I, I think that's a really big deal for Peoria. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Lisa. The work you're doing is very, very important to our city, so thank you. And Katie Gregory, congratulations to you. You're going to be a fantastic addition to the leadership team, and I'm really looking forward to working with you. So welcome to a very talented group. I mean that literally, and I don't know if Eric knows what he's in for, being part of the, the singing leadership team, the musical leadership team. Yeah, more to come on that. I have just some really great positive things that happened in my district in the last couple of weeks. We had, the Council, the Council Mixer was great, and that's always a wonderful opportunity to get together with other West Valley council members and, and share information and just really build strong relationships. It's so worthwhile. But in the district, we had several meetings and events. On Tuesday, the 13th of February, during the day, we had a meeting, a monthly meeting that we have with the Trilogy Liaison Committee. So they're a group of citizens that represent the active adult community in my district, which is, you know, thousands of people. It's a growing community and very engaged community. And that same evening, we were back again at that community meeting with the Bike Club, which is somewhere between eighty and a hundred. That, it's bigger than that, but that's usually what they get at those community meetings. And in both of those meetings, Adina was there with her team, talking about some of the things that we're doing in the city, particularly with the widening of the Happy Valley Bridge and improving the access for bikes and pedestrians on that bridge and just the, the safety, and improving that road all of the way up to Target. And after, the feedback I got after those meetings was just unbelievable. It made me so proud. And I can never hear those presentations enough because there's so much information, and it really helps me soak it all in, too. But both groups, particularly the Bike Club, they said to me after it was over that Peoria government is great to work with. Not only did they say that, just government at all is great to work with is, is amazing, but they wrote it in an email as well, just saying how fantastic Brandon has been in working with them, and the feedback was tremendous. So keep doing what you're doing up there and keeping them informed and being responsive to their needs, and it's really building a strong relationship. And again, I was really proud of you and your team and the impact that you had that day. It was, it was a big day, very successful. We had a career day at Vistancia Elementary School. The elementary school called me and asked me if I would come out and meet with their seventh and eighth graders at a career day in the multipurpose room, and they move hundreds of seventh and eighth graders around the room, and a dozen at a time stop at the table, and they ask about, you know, what does it take to become a council member? The school asked me at kind of, I don't know, four, three, four days before the event, we don't have a judge and we don't have an attorney, and is there any way you can help us with that? And so Irene, my assistant, helped me immediately, reached out, and lo and behold, there I was, you know, the most popular person in the room because I showed up with our city attorney and Steve Berg and our municipal, one of the associate judges, I believe, Joseph Malka, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. And we sat two hours, nonstop, hundreds of seventh and eighth graders rotating through as we were talking about, you know, what it takes to do these jobs. And it all came down to communication, and we kind of tag teamed, and it was an action-packed morning. But really, the main thing is to thank you so much, both of you, for being so responsive on such short notice and representing the city so well to our future leaders and putting that kind of time into that morning. It was fantastic. It was, it was a good couple of weeks. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Finn?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to share my judging of the patriotic speeches at Oakwood, but after that, it just sort of flo, it just falls flat. Yeah. Thank you. Right, I guess. But I do want to congratulate Katie. Very well-deserved, and I'm sure you're going to do fantastic. And Lisa, very well-done as well, so we're very proud of both of you. And I want to also just mention to Jeff, this is another opportunity of us promoting from within. I know it doesn't always go that way, but, you know, sometimes getting outside involvement gives us a really good mix, but the amount of people that we've been able to promote from within is a testament to the leadership. I know we've said this before, but I think it's very important that we continue that and we look for those opportunities for people from within. So great decisions, you know, as usual, and I really am thrilled that we were able to promote that position from within. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Katie. Sound like a broken record, but truly an honor to have you in that position. And I jokingly said something to you today that I stopped in last week to congratulate you, and you already weren't in your office, but you were probably out hard at work learning the departments and that you're taking over, so congratulations on that well-deserved promotion. Last week, I attended the Council Mixer with Bridgette and Bill, and like Bill was saying, you know, there's a lot of things going on in the West Valley that, that we can work jointly together with, it's homelessness. One of the other cities talked about, lo and behold, that a particular billboard company was trying to impose billboards near, near some of their residents. And we were able to talk about how Peoria and Glendale worked together to, to combat that issue, and so we handed some information over to them, so hopefully that they'll be able to use that information. But it's, it's that, it's that cohesiveness between the, the cities to say, you know, if, if it doesn't work here, the developer's going to try to move it to another city. And sometimes, as, if we're working together for the good and for the bad, we can make things happen here in the West Valley. And so it's really nice to have that partnership with those communities, and I'm glad that we are a part of that and will continue that in the future. Last week, I attended the Leadership West Meeting and had the great honor of attending with, I think we had about seven youth members from Peoria, but we also had about eight members from Buckeye. So it's nice to see that the Buckeye youth and the Peoria youth are working together to better the West Valley community. So Maylie and Cassidy, thank you so much for attending that, that luncheon. And then this afternoon, Bridgette and I attended the Cactus League Luncheon, and what a great honor that was. For those of you who don't know, you know, this is our twenty-fifth year celebrating our, our sports complex, and just a great opportunity. If you haven't come out to experience a game, you absolutely need to come out and experience one of our games. And the thing that's different this year is I think that there's actually thirteen night games this year versus the all-day games. So it really gives an opportunity for some parents to be able to take their kids to, to more evening games if they're working. So again, opening day is this coming Friday, so please come out and enjoy a day at the ballpark. And then lastly, this coming Saturday at Fletcher Heights Trailhead, we're having our Park Fest. It's from eight o'clock in the morning till eleven, and we're just going to showcase the trails that, that Peoria has to offer. We have an amazing amount of trails within the city. I think it's like twenty-seven miles of trail system that Peoria has to offer. So it's just an opportunity, not going to be a lot of kids' events and stuff like that. We're going to give away helmets and talk about our trails and sustainability. We're going to talk, code enforcement's going to be out there, AFSCME is going to be out there, fire and police are going to be out there, just showcasing some of the great attributes that they have to the city. So again, it's from eight to eleven this coming Saturday at the Fletcher Heights Trailhead off of Deer Valley and Seventy-Fifth Avenue. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we have something coming to Old Town that we've worked for, for years and hoped for, and that is a coffee shop. Driftwood Coffee is opening this coming weekend right downtown here at Eighty-third Avenue and Jefferson. It's on the east side there that, I'm really proud of the adaptive reuse that Axiom Church has done, and Driftwood Coffee is within that building. It was the original Peoria lumberyard. And if you go inside, they still, they've saved the beams and everything from the original lumberyard, so it's, it's really quite nice. But coffee, coffee for you guys that work here. It's a couple blocks away. We have lots of other things, too. I, I think everybody knows by now that the old Edwards Hotel has been purchased, and the gentleman is very excited about moving forward with it and hopes to have it open. He hopes by the end of the year, and so do I. Congratulations, Katie. We've watched you grow, and it's been wonderful. And I'm kind of like the mayor, I just saw you as a community services. You're so much fun, and, and you're the life of the party, and rah-rah, and you do all those events, and then, seriously, money? Budget? Ooh. But that just shows how multi-talented you are. And Jeff, I want to congratulate you for all of the hires that you have put in place since you have become city manager. Nothing short of brilliant. Lisa, I know how hard you work, and I know how close sustainability is to your heart. You'd have to love it to work as hard at it as you do, so congratulations on this award. And the next thing I think that's coming up, if I'm not mistaken, is Earth Day, and that's April, what is the date? Twenty?
Twenty-first.
Oh, my birthday.
Well, Earth Day is the twenty-second, the planet loses the twenty-first.
Well, that happens to be my birthday, too. I think that's why you do it there every year, isn't it? So April twenty-first, easy for me to remember. And it's at Sunra, Sunrise Mountain?
West Wing Park.
West Wing Park. I'm sorry, I, I knew we were having it, I didn't know the details. But that is such a wonderful day, just so much fun. It really makes sustainability fun. And, oh, a fun thing I did this week was I attended Ira Murphy Book Fair, and I stayed through a class of fourth graders coming in and fifth graders coming in, and they're so excited about books and stories and being in the library. They have an amazing librarian there. So, you know, that's just so important to keep that, that spark alive in kids of reading and literacy. Tomorrow night, I have been invited to an HOA meeting for Roundtree Ranch, which is, I think, my largest subdivision in my district. And it's at six o'clock in the community center, and I'm just saying this as a reminder for anyone, if you'd let it slip your mind, that that is tomorrow night. And I look forward to meeting a lot of you and maybe answering some questions or just seeing what's going on in your world. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Leoni?
Yes, thank you. First thing I want to mention is that we just had the dinner on the diamond on the ninth, and it was a great event. We had it every year. Last year was a first year they didn't have it, but we had it this year, and it's a great event. And I believe that between the city and Chamber of Commerce, it, it came out just great. Great food, they had a silent auction, and I hope they keep this event going for every year. It's a, it's a, it's an event that we have to keep on in Peoria. Also, on the tenth, on a Saturday, we had Neighborhood Pride, and it was just great. We had a lot of volunteers, a lot of them from the church, and it was, it was something that, that we do, I think it's like twice a year, and, and it comes out just great. People get new rocks, get their house painted, and this is something else that we want to do to keep our neighborhood up, and that's one of the ways of doing it. And hopefully that we can keep that Neighborhood Pride going. On the Saturday the third, from two to four, we have a shred-a-thon, and I just don't know what the name of the school is, but it's on Cactus and Eighty-third Avenue. Call my office, and Karen will give you all the information. So if you want your stuff taken down, she's over there laughing. If you want to get rid of some of your stuff, bring them on down to the shred-a-thon. I think it's, it's going to be a great one. You only have three a year, and it's important to the people. We also have an event coming up at Scotland Yard Park. It's a new park. We've had it about three or four years now, and it's, we're going to have, everything is free. We're going to have a movie, and the movie is called Coco. So I don't know if you ever saw it or not, but I haven't seen it. We're going to have free hot dogs and free drinks and snow cones. So come on down to Scotland Yard Park and enjoy yourself. Again, call my office, speak to Karen, and she'll tell you just how to get there, because I'll get you lost. Then we also have the Leadership School coming up. We have this every year. It started two thousand, I believe, two thousand and two. And it's a great school. You have between eight to ten meetings, and you have the Parks and Recreation, you have the Police Department, you have the Fight Department. So it's a good, it's a good take-in, and you're, you're going to learn a lot. And it's from six to nine. And also, don't eat when you come, because we feed you. And everything is free. And like Scotland Yard Park, everything is free. And the last thing I want to say is that we also have a HOA class, and I think it's March the fifth. So if you want to know more about that, like I said, call my office, and it's cost twenty dollars, and I think it's four, four days. But it's a good event, and I think everybody that's home, that's on the board should go and hear what's going on. I also want to thank Katie for taking the job, and, you know, I think you have twins. Katie and I both have twins, but mine's are fifty-five years old. So anyway, if you want to know anything about twins, just ask me or Katie, we'll tell you all about it. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless this great country of ours, and have a good weekend.
Thank you. Youth Council Liaison, Catrice?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First off, I would like to say congratulations to Katie, and thank you, Lisa, for the presentation of the STAR Award. That's really cool. On February 8th, I had the honor of leading the Pledge of Allegiance at the Peoria Unified School District School Board meeting. On February 14th, it was Valentine's Day, so I hope you all had a wonderful Valentine's Day because at 6:00 a.m. in the morning, I helped prepare muffins with the muffin, for the muffins with mom event at Cotton Bowl Elementary School. We prepared muffins for the families. And on February 15th, members of the city of Peoria's Youth Advisory Board members, including myself, we attended the Leadership West Luncheon at Rio Vista's Community Center. There were great discussions, keynote speakers, and examples, and great examples of leadership skills. Thank you for allowing, I would like to say, thank you for allowing our Youth Advisory Board members at this event. Later that day, I then volunteered for Special Olympics volleyball, for the volleyball team, for the Fiesta Volleyball Tournament, and we laid out the volleyball floors at the Cardinal Stadium. On February 19th, I volunteered for the same event at the same place, but for the teardown crew. We took apart the volleyball floors that we set up, which were three courts, and it took us like three hours, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one more comment, and that is, this evening at our study session, a study was unveiled to us or reported to us about our Peoria Police Department. And it included a lot of data-driven information, but I would like to thank our city council for all of your engagement and all of your suggestions and attention to detail when it came to those recommendations and staffing for our police department. It's something that is going to be ongoing with us. It's going to have to have more meetings and more information as we go forward and get closer to our budget. But, you know, it was a lot of information, and I just really appreciate all of your engagement and how seriously you took such a big, major issue for our city. It's a core service. We care very much about the, the safety of our officers as well as our citizens, and so I just want our citizens to know. so I just want our citizens to know that this is something that we are going to be pursuing, every recommendation, and deciding how we can put those things into place to make sure that our police department is running as efficient and optimized as it can possibly be. So thanks to our city council and our city manager for bringing that forward. And with that, we are adjourned.